Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the redevelopment authority to order today is Thursday, November 16, 2017. It's 8:30 a.m. We're at the Community Center Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street, and also on the Internet and television on the public access channel. Can we have a roll call for... Well, good morning. Aubrey, how are you? You give us a roll call?
I have Supervisor Aboud, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Crowell, Coram is present.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's call on our good friend Mark Seater of the Salvation Army. Mark, you're back from California. You want to get a start on the right foot today?
Our God in heaven, Lord, we pray for our city, bless and protect us. Father, we thank you for these leaders of our city that have gathered here to determine our future and direction. Lord, I ask that you give each of them wisdom and understanding. We ask for your presence today to guide and direct them. God be with them during this busy holiday season. Bless them and their families. Bless them for their continued faithfulness. Father, we pray these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Could I call our new Chief Financial Officer Jason?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're now on public comment. Let me just start off public comment by saying I've been... As everybody knows, this morning it's raining pretty good. It rained pretty good last night. No secret to anybody. We're getting some minor flooding in the streets. I want everybody to know that Public Works staff has been out all night working on things. We have some flooding happening on Merrimack. It's kind of Highway 50 East and north of Highway 50 East. Our Public Works folks are sandbagging out there this morning. It's a good reminder to everybody that at this time of year, you know, it takes all of us to go out and make sure that we try and keep as many leaves out of the drain as we can. I mean, we have our own city vehicles going through and cleaning up the leaves, but we should all kind of pay attention to that and bag them up and do something other than putting them down the drain if we can help it. Also, last year, we did a wonderful job. Our citizens did a wonderful job of going out and monitoring their own particular gutters and the gutters alongside of their neighbor to make sure, you know, that we all did our part in trying to alleviate the problem because as the paper says, and I believe everything I read in the paper, First Amendment, you back there?
Yes.
It's a river of rain coming. I've heard that actually from several different places. And it'll probably continue through the day. It's just a kind of a reminder of what we may be going through for the rest of this year. So I just want everybody to know that Public Works is on this, and if you've got problems, call Public Works and we'll see where we go. Okay? We'll take care of it. All right, other public comment. Anybody? Didn't mean to take it all. Arts.
Arts.
Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this moment to tell you about our new exhibition. I'm Sharon Ross with Capital City Arts Initiative, and we just changed the exhibition in the room. It's called Inside and Outside the Lines. It's a two-person show with Susan Kotler on this side of the room. She lives in Carson City. And those are watercolors. Pretty amazing. Jonathan Farber from Reno is on this side of the room. Those are drawings. His are available as prints. The information's posted down by the table. And there's a wall text back by the door to tell you more about them. The show will be up through March 1st. Also, we have Suzanne Forsteri still over at the courthouse, and that show will be up through mid-January. We opened, had a party last night for Inspirations over at the Brick, high school art teachers. So we've got art going all over.
Who's doing the one on the back there with all those lines that make me look like I've kind of reading an eye chart all screwed up?
I don't remember the title. I'd have to go back and look.
All right.
We'll have that removed.
No, no.
No, it does. It's always nice to have these, you know, to show art before we're doing things. Art brings wonderfulness to the world, so thanks.
Well, thank you. Thank you very, very much. We really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Sharon. Say thanks to your group, too. That's great. All right, further public comment? Anybody? Mark, come on.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, my wife came down and took my place down here to do the invocation.
She did a great job, too, by the way.
Yeah, she does. You should invite her more often. You had mentioned that you'd like me to... She'd mentioned that I had to leave to go to California to help with the fires, and you mentioned you'd like me to come back and make a report on that. So if, with your permission, I'd like to do that.
Sure, go ahead.
On October 11th, I went down to Napa, and I arrived there with about the same time as the officer in Reno. And the way it works with the Salvation Army, in a major disaster, we've had some small, what we call small disasters that we were able to handle locally. And in such case, I'm the incident commander here locally. But in a major disaster, if we have something major happen, someone else will come in from outside the area. I'd become the public information officer, and they take over. So I can take care of the people I know here and do the work that I need to do here as an officer of the Salvation Army. And we got to Reno at the same time. They made the, or not to Reno, to Napa, the same time. They made the Reno officer the incident commander there, and they sent me to Santa Rosa. I had no idea. I don't follow the news in California. So I got there, and they made me incident commander. We were, at that time, on the 11th, we were serving about 3,000 meals a day in Santa Rosa to the evacuees. There was two large neighborhoods that had been evacuated, both over 1,000 homes each. One was more of a rental-type area. The other one was million-dollar homes or better. So it was a larger area, but just as many homes. They also had two trailer parks that had been destroyed. One had about 75 trailers in it, and one had about 160. And in all four of those neighborhoods, 10% of the homes remained. 90% were wiped out. As we continued to work there, we did the feeding. The next day, another neighborhood was evacuated on my way in in the morning, about 5 o'clock in the morning. I met several people that had lost their homes just in an instant, walked out in their 90s. It was 11:30 at night when they got evacuated. So what you wear when you go to bed at 11:30 at night is what they walked out of their house in. They had nothing. Our meals moved up to about 5,000 a day in that period. We were providing five different evacuation sites, and we also worked with the city to repopulate the neighborhoods towards the end of my stay there. The neighborhoods, they wanted to bring in the residents of the neighborhood, but they didn't want lucky loos. As you can imagine, it could get pretty ugly when you got a lot of people that are just tourists going in there. So they invited the Salvation Army to put together a team of ministers, and we were able to draw ministers from all over California, all the way up to Washington and in other areas, multi-faith ministers and also secular counselors to come in about 40 to 50 per day to go into those neighborhoods and just walk the neighborhoods and meet with the people of the neighborhoods as they met their homes that were gone. We also worked with Google and brought in feeding trucks. Your fancy gourmet-type roach coach were two or three per neighborhood to go in and provide meals. We continued to work there. We were starting to shut down a little bit. I was there for two weeks. So we were starting to shut down a few of the facilities as I left, and as early as last week, they were still feeding the neighborhoods, and they were closing down the last shelter. So that's basically what I did at that time period.
I appreciate the update, and thanks to Salvation Army, and thanks to you for going down to offer support and help for the tremendous disaster in Northern California there. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other public comment this morning? Anybody? Okay, we take public comment as we go through the agenda generally where it's appropriate. It's usually always appropriate. I also take public comment at the end, and we'll have public comment before and after redevelopment as it starts when we go through there. So also bear with us today on this agenda. We have a lot of different things where we're going to have disclosures because we're a small community, so we're going to have those things as we go through the day, through the agenda. So just bear with us as we do it. You'll see some votes, disclosures, and we'll vote. Some will disclose and not vote, and things like that. We've worked pretty carefully with our legal counsel to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the public ethics law. So there's nobody else on public comment. Let's now take up the possible approval of the minutes of October 19th and November 2nd.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for October 19th, 2017, and November 2nd, 2017, as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion?
Discussion, I'll abstain on November 2nd, as I was not present.
I should abstain on that one, too. All right. All right, so...
Would you like me to make two separate motions?
That's all right. You have to make two separate motions. We better do it.
All right, so I'll withdraw my original motion, and I will now move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for October 19th, 2017, as presented.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second for the minutes of October 19th, 2017. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried on November 2nd. Thank you, Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for November 2nd, 2017, as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a couple seconds on the motion. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, abstain, two abstains. Okay, Supervisor Bagwell and the mayor. Okay, so everybody knows, we were back in DC talking about tiger grants and other things that Carson City has business with, with the federal government and their agencies. All right. On the agenda, let's take up item 7, the adoption of the agenda. Any changes?
No change.
We have no changes. Board members, anything? I don't see any changes to the agenda, so then we'll take the agenda as published. Let's move to the consent agenda. I know there's a disclosure on this one. Supervisor Aboud, you want to talk about item number 10?
Thank you. Item number 10A, the Americor Vista Lease, NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. I serve as the president of the Greenhouse Project Board, a nonprofit organization. The Greenhouse Project is under contract with Americor to provide staffing for Carson Tahoe Health Foothill Garden on their campus. The food that staff grows will be donated to the Carson City Meals on Wheels program. The Ethics Commission has opined that where there is a relationship that is substantially similar to that of a substantial and continuing business relationship, there exists a disqualifying conflict. However, I've also been advised that where the matter before me is not related to my private commitment and is far enough removed that a reasonable person in my position would not be materially affected, then I should vote. Here, my commitment to CTH through the Greenhouse Project and the volunteers provided by Americor is far enough removed from the lease agreement between the city and Americor that my private commitment is not affected, nor is the matter before me affected by my private commitment. Therefore, I will be voting on this matter.
Okay, any other disclosures? I don't see any. We're going to also, I understand, we want a poll for consideration and discussion. An explanation, item number 12, that's 12A and 12B, is that correct? Anyone want to do that? All right. So with that in mind, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as published, with the exception of 12A and 12B, which we'll hear in a minute.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the items of the consent agenda consisting of 8, 9, 10A, consisting of the version that was handed out as late material this morning and posted on the city website yesterday, 11A.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none. Should ask, before I take your vote on this motion, any members of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, I don't see any. All right. On the motion, there's a motion and a second on the motion. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Let's see here. Where is it?
Oh, did you not join it?
I did. There it is. It's under consent agenda.
I marked your vote, Mr. Mayor.
Mark my vote. Okay, I'm voting aye. All right. Thank you. All right, let's take up item number 12A, 12Alpha, please.
Good morning.
Good night. Good night. Did you sleep last night, Rick?
Yeah, pretty much this morning. Got a little rocky.
All right, all right. Who's going to start? Laura, you going to start off? Okay, go.
Good morning. Laura Rader, Purchasing and Contracts. This is to approve Contract 1718-062 with Sloan Vasquez McAfee for the Solid Waste Franchise Agreement Consulting Services. This is for a not-to-exceed total amount of $117,660, and it will be funded from the landfill professional services account.
Who wants, want to tell us what we're doing here? I understand. Then we've got some questions.
We have Joe Sloan with us this morning. If we have any questions, any detailed questions on the contract.
Just tell us why we're doing this. I mean, this is a step in the process. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, yes. It's been many years. None of us were ever involved in the original franchise agreement for trash hauling here in town. So we've brought, we needed to bring on some expertise in the industry to help us go about and actually know what some of the industry standards are, some of the things we're looking for. He's already given us some good insight of some of the things we need to be looking for going into single-stream recycling, any other mandatory pickups, anything we're looking at. They're going to come on and help us do our public outreach, put together information of what's happening around us, be able to bring all that to us, be able to present that to you folks, and help us go through the process to get to issuing the RFP for a new franchisee or potentially a new franchisee. So that's where we're at today.
Before, I think we got some questions. So it's a bag. We'll go.
Good morning. What I'm interested in is often when you put out RFPs, potentially that you've worked with other clients, do you put alternatives? Or, for instance, you mentioned single-stream or mandatory pickup. So what I'm interested in, are you envisioning a one-size-fits-all type of RFP, or that it'll be what-if scenarios?
Okay, there you go. High-tech, you know. Not sure what to do with the switch there.
You're doing well.
Okay, thank you. We prefer, of course, everything that we do is at your pleasure. So it's really, we take direction from counsel. But our preference is that we try not to be overly prescriptive. We define what the objective is, and we give a very specific set of criteria that respondents have to respond to. But then we also like to leave it open. We don't know everything, and there's, you know, there may be a new mousetrap that we haven't heard of or seen yet, and we don't want to preclude that in a public procurement process. So we do have a standard that we would suggest that all bidders be held to, that they all have to respond to something. So at least we have an apples-to-apples comparison of all bidders, but then leave the door open for them to present an alternative. So as I said, we like to, even our core proposal, we like to leave some latitude there.
So just to follow up, then, are you suggesting that you might present to this board, here are the five core, pretend five, who cares how many, but these are the core things we believe should be in the contract, and then the rest would be optional? Type services are open to interpretation?
Certainly. And there are a number of meetings that with you that are planned throughout this process. I mean, they're not calendared yet, but they're in our scope of work. And what we would do in those is we would, as a result of interaction with staff, as a result of looking at what's happening around you and other communities, all of those things would essentially inform the process that we'd bring forward to you. Now, we do this a lot, and we're based in California, although we're doing a lot of work over here now. I've been working on a couple of projects in Washoe County for the last year. In fact, last week, I had the privilege of being up at the Incline Village Transfer Station doing a waste composition study where we were visited every day by six bears in search of food. But we're doing a lot of work in the area. We're already very familiar with a lot of what's happening here in terms of services and the development of new infrastructure to serve the communities in terms of recycling and even renewable energy processes. So those will all inform the discussion, as well as community meetings, where we'll be seeking input from the community regarding what they'd like to see in terms of service and service levels. So all that will come to you, and we will prepare something that we will suggest to you is what we think is a good way to go, and then, of course, it's up to you to decide what you want.
So give me your assessment of the chances that there's some new mousetrap out there. You're pretty familiar with this field, I'm sure. So that mousetrap is probably not out there, or am I guessing?
Well, there's a lot going on, Supervisor, is it Barrett? 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 There is a lot of new development that's going on right now. I mean, you know, the route collection trucks are going to be pretty much the same as they've always been. You could decide whether you want clean-air vehicles, or if you want, you know, you can decide what type of, if you want CNG or LNG or diesel rigs, you can decide what cart sizes that you want to have at all the households. You can decide if you want one-size-fits-all, or if you want people to be able to have a selection of various sizes at every home. Those are all decisions that, so it's not new mousetraps, but it's those types of decisions that you'll have before you. What color do you want the carts? How often do you want recycling service? If you want it at all, do you want it every week? Do you want it every other week? Those are the types of things. Now, there are, and I will say, the project that I've actually brought me up to this part of the state a couple of years ago is a renewable energy process that's well underway, that's being developed out towards the Tahoe-Reno Industrial Center out there where the Tesla plant's going in. And I know it sounds maybe a pipe dream, but they're going to be making jet fuel out of garbage.
Interesting. You're saying you're going to, though, make one recommendation, or will you give us two or three to look at and rank them?
Now, are you, in terms of the final selection process, you mean, when we get responses from an RFP? Well, now, that will be up to you also, because the way that we typically do it is we receive proposals in response to an RFP. We go through and we evaluate those. We score them in terms of their responsiveness, mostly to five or six categories, the companies, the programs that they propose, their experience, their financial ability to actually be able to do what they propose to do, their litigation history, all those types of things. We gather all of that information. We rank them, then, we score them, and then that comes to you. And so we would have them scored, and we will have one that's ranked first.
Thank you.
And it would be up to you to decide how you want to proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Sloan.
Good morning.
I've mentioned previously that when we put the RFP out, that I'd like to see a provision in there that allows for an impact fee for the impact to our roads from the garbage trucks. And what I've been told is that that's fairly common in other jurisdictions. Have you seen that, and have you included provisions like that in other RFPs?
Yes, absolutely. So they're typically, they're, and I shouldn't say typically, you know, California kind of leads. The reason you have so many Californians coming here is because California leads the ways in fees and taxes. But...
That's not my intent to compete.
I know. I know. No, say that's not a good answer. No, but it's very common, and it's not just in California, but franchise fees, which used to be, there used to be just kind of a one fee that was added on to trash service contracts that really kind of was all-encompassing. It had to do with providing funds for Public Works for road repairs, contract administration and that type of thing. So, and those fees ran anywhere from 5% to 20%. And so it's a pretty broad range, depending upon the level of need in the city and the level of services that they have to apply, that the city has to directly respond to in response to providing solid waste services. So it's a broad fee. But then there is actually, and it's been just in the last four or five years, that there's an additional fee that's a road impact fee. And there's actually a calculation. I'm not an engineer, but there's an engineered calculation in terms of the weight, the frequency of the trucks on the different types of roads, not just the main through fairs, but the neighborhoods as well, that can, that is actually a calculation that we can do that will indicate what kinds of revenues would be required to maintain the roads under that use.
And Steph can correct me if I have this wrong, but I believe that we already are charging them. charging the maximum franchise fee for trash. So, it would be the additional road-impact fee. But in Carson, as most cities across the country are experiencing, we have a desperate need for revenue to repair roads. So, what I'm looking for is a provision that would allow us to generate some revenue for the impact that is actually being caused, and we would dedicate that revenue to road repair.
That is, that is becoming more and more common.
Other comments from the board? I think, one, I think it's a great idea to have someone come and give us a full panoply of what's happening in the garbage world. I'm always amazed at how much there is, how many little nuances there are to what's going on in the garbage world. And I, you know, Supervisor Barrett mentioned, you know, what's new out there. I know that there are things happening in commercial food waste.
That's correct.
You know, where it's not just jet fuel, but you might make dog biscuits.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. And so, you know, I'd kind of like to also know, you know, it's probably not, I don't know if it's on a, if it could be done on an RFP or not, but I'd like to know if there should be more than one provider that does different segments of a community, like commercial or residential, or picks up one type of waste and another, or if it should all be at one from an economy of scale provision. I'd just kind of like to know what it is. I'd also like to know, and we'll get into this further as you go down the road. I know, you know, if there are inroads we can make in terms of regionalization of our trash to get economies of scale from, because there's more to, well, if there's just, you can get economies of scale for more trash. And I'm reminded that one time, we went through this drill when I was first mayor, and came back, and they said, "You don't have enough garbage here to do a lot of the things that you really want to do." And I said, you know, I don't know if that's a bad thing or a good thing, you know, but it leads me to, led me to the thought that you might want to think about regionalization of trash in some fashion. Maybe that's not possible to be done, just to get the economy a scale of larger volumes. Okay, that's it. And I know that you're going to be doing outreach, and that's great, and you should do as much of that as we can, and keep the board advised and all these things, because there are a lot of different things happening, and we, you know, for these things, we want to make sure that we're on the cutting edge, because these are going to go on for a long time. Okay?
Well, all of those, all of those issues, Mayor, are things that we will bring to your attention, and it'll be your direction that we'll take in how to go on those things. We certainly will advise you. I would say a city the size of Carson City is of sufficient size to accomplish most of the economies of scale that are available through solid waste service. The amount of waste that you're generating now is sufficient, at least in terms of the collection operation, the transportation part of it, to accomplish economies of scale. When you start to talk about regionalization, you're talking about more major public infrastructure type things like landfills and waste processing facilities, the attention to food waste. Those types of things generally require a larger waste shed, so to speak, and those are all things that we can discuss with you as we develop the process.
Yeah, I have no preconceived ideas. I just want to see the panoply of options that are out there.
Well, we'll bring those to you.
Okay, all right. All right, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Let's see where it goes. A public comment, anybody? Okay, let's take a motion.
I move to approve contract number 1718-062 with Sloan-Vezquez-McAfee for solid waste franchise agreement consulting services for a not-to-exceed total amount of $117,660 to be funded from the landfill professional services account.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Oh, my end. Where am I here? Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mine's not coming up here.
She already logged it.
All right, all right. I'll take care of doing a break here. All right, let's take up 12. Bravo. Chief, how you doing?
Excellent.
You guys have had your hands full here lately. Thanks for all your help and efforts on this tragedy that hit our community the other day, last Thursday. I know you guys are out there. I also know that, you know, tragedies such as this have a tremendous impact, not just on families and friends, but on the providers. So, we're aware of that, keep that in mind, and I know that you do that anyway, but make sure we take care of all the people too. Okay, all right, all right. Laura, Ms. Raider, go.
All right, this is to approve the purchase of burn insulation material from fire facilities for a not-to-exceed amount of $58,530.89. This will be funded from the repairs training facility account in the capital projects fund, and a licensed contractor will install the material under a separate labor contract.
Chief, you want to tell us what's going on?
Sure, a little background. We have what we call Class A, meaning normal wood, straw, hay, that kind of stuff, burn rooms within our training facility, and that is to train our recruits as well as our current firefighters and fire behavior and safety and operating in a high danger situation. So, what this is, the building itself is a little over 17 years old, so we've gotten about 17 years out of the insulation. That protects the concrete from spalling and failing, and we're at that point, we're actually beyond that point now, where some of the rooms we're no longer able to burn in because of the deterioration of the material. So, this is to repair and upgrade that. In addition to that, it will create, we will also install some sensors in there so that we can monitor the temperatures in there, which will increase the safety of our firefighters so we don't allow things to get too hot. As you continue to burn in a concrete building, as you can imagine, the heat continues to build, has nowhere to go, and later, as the day goes on, even a smaller fire will create and generate more heat than what we started with in the morning. So, this is a little bit of an upgrade to make it a little bit safer for our firefighters.
We've got a couple of questions. Supervisor Brankowski and Supervisor Bagwell.
Good morning, Chief.
Morning.
Can you go through the process about our agreement with other jurisdictions to use the facility and the fees that they pay that go towards the maintenance and repair of the facility?
Sure, thank you. So, each agency that utilizes or participates in our regional training facility signs a contract for usage, and it is broken down into several things. It's kind of an à la carte menu, or you can buy the whole buffet. And so, at a maximum of $3,000 a year, you get full use of that facility, or it is broken down to the burn room specifically, it's $500 a day if you're going to do live-fire training into there. So, that is what we charge for all of that. And then, in addition to that, there are academy charges. So, agencies that participate in our regional fire academy have additional charges for materials and maintenance of costs.
Do you by chance know what the total revenue is that's generated from other jurisdictions that we can use to maintain the facility? I know I didn't ask you that earlier, so, good news.
Hi. Good news, Nancy? No. Deputy City Manager, last fiscal year, we received $80,000 in revenue, or a little over $80,000. And I looked, year-to-date for fiscal 18, we've already received $20,000.
Thank you.
So, it might be, great minds might have been on the same page here. So, for me, one of the issues I want to try and address on all contracts that we do with other governmental entities and things like that, is that we actually break it down into your operating cost and then your capital cost. Because what I want to make sure we do on all these contracts is that we put potentially the capital portion of the revenue into the savings account. So, I know that Brad and I are working really hard on the asset management, and I think this contract or the dollars that you receive from the other governmental entities would be a perfect example of one that we should split that dollar out and put it into the long-term extraordinary maintenance account so that every five, seven, 10 years, the money's actually there. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that this is a perfect example of one we could, again, begin that systematic process of putting the dollars in the right funding sources. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Public comment, anybody? Motion's in order. Supervisor Brankowski, go, or either one.
Me, okay. I move to approve the purchase of burn insulation material from Fire Facilities, Inc. for a total not-to-exceed amount of $58,530.89 to be funded from the repairs training facility account in the capital projects fund.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Carried. I did, I thought.
I'm sorry.
Thought I did, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. I don't know what's going on with my.
We'll have to sign you out and sign you back in. Log it.
Yeah, I might, I've already been.
I emailed IT for you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me join back here again.
Let me see if you're reloading.
I did a reload, so it's connecting. All right. We've done item 13. We'll now recess as the Board of Supervisors, and I'll turn the gavel over to the Chair of the Redevelopment Authority Supervisor Aboud, and she can take it from there.
I'd like to call to order the Redevelopment Authority and let the record reflect that we have a quorum, and move on to item 16, public comment. Is there any public comment at this point in time? Seeing none, on to item 17, approval of the minutes for June 1st, 2017, and June 15th, 2017.
Madam Chair, it looks like all the members were present at both meetings, so I will move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority for June 1st, 2017, and June 15th, 2017, as presented.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion passes. Thank you. On to item 18, for possible action to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of an agreement between Carson City and Carson City Redevelopment Authority and Chris Russell pursuant to the incentive program for redevelopment area project number two. And City, Nick, are you going to take us through this?
Hi, I'm Madam Chair. So, I'm going to run through the highlights of the agreement. The business owner, Chris Russell, and his CFO, Paul Stevens, are here. At the conclusion of my presentation, they do have a short PowerPoint presentation they're going to do, and then, obviously, they will be available for your questions and public comment. So, this, we've been working with Chris Russell now for almost a year. We've actually looked in depth into his business practices. He operates Nissan and Kia franchises in several other cities. I spoke with the Mayor of Pocatello, Idaho, as well as other members of the city government there. Chris has a great reputation. It's our assessment that he would be, he would be a positive addition to not only the business community, but the community at large here in Carson City. So, this is a 20-year agreement in that he agrees, if this agreement is ratified, obviously, to operate his business in Carson City for 20 years. It is a sales tax rebate program, and what that means is, at the end of every calendar year, we're going to look at the total amount of sales tax generated by, I assume it's going to be Carson City Nissan, but I'm not sure exactly what the name will be, but we'll look at the tax receipts for the year, and again, if this agreement is approved, we will rebate 30% of that to Chris Russell. There is a 15-year or $3.5 million cap on that rebate program, whichever one comes first. So, if he hits the dollar amount, then the agreement at that point terminates. If he hits 15 years, at that point, the agreement would terminate. Just to put that $3.5 million number in context, because it is a considerable amount of money, based on the sales forecast, we project, over the term of this agreement, that this business will generate just under $15 million in tax revenue for the city. So, we think it's a good deal. I'm going to talk about jobs a little bit later, but we think it's a good deal, not only for revenue, but we also think it'll promote pretty strong job growth, and the jobs pay a very decent median wage. So, based on that, we've worked into the agreement that he will be eligible to begin receiving that rebate when he has 30 full-time employees, and that'll be subject to verification, obviously. And I think we're going to have a little bit more discussion later about employees, but he's agreed that the eligibility will begin when he has 30 full-time employees. He's also agreed to employ a local contractor, and it is my understanding that he has already procured a local contractor and a local design team. He will do his best to hire all local Carson City resident employees as well. A couple other elements that I think are important of this agreement. As you know, in 2019, we're going to begin our South Carson Street project. Part of that project is going to be, we're going to demolish and then reconstruct all the existing curb, gutters, sidewalks, driveways. So, as part of this agreement, looking at the potential parcel that I think Mr. Russell has settled on, there currently is not a driveway there. So, we have, we have tentatively agreed in here for your consideration to move forward from our 2019 South Carson Street project. We have agreed to move his driveway forward. So, we'll construct at city expense the commercial driveway entrance on Carson Street into his property. We're going to do it anyway in 2019, and it just makes sense not to have the business owner in probably 2018 build a driveway, and then, we're going to come along a year later, demolish it, and then, as part of our new streetscape, reconstruct it. So, we have agreed to construct that driveway and move it forward out of our 2019 South Carson Street project. Public Works Director, unfortunately, right now is dealing with some of the storm issues from last night, but he told me that's not a problem, and we'll be able, we should be able to do that without any difficulty at all. So, with that, I'm available for your questions, and then, following that, I'm going to bring Mr. Russell up, and he's going to go through a short presentation for you.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate it. Board questions, Brad?
I think this is directed to you, Adriana. In section 10.6 litigation, the first time, it was a couple of months ago when this came up, I had asked if we could add a dispute resolution clause, and I missed that in my review this time. It's not in there. Is it possible to get some language together for that before we end the item?
Sure, and just for clarification, you actually want a dispute resolution paragraph, not just lumped in with the litigation?
Right, just laying out the procedure, you know, step A is that you go to non-binding mediation, and then, potentially arbitration or litigation, whatever our standard clause is, that just sets out the procedure so that it's clear in the contract what happens if there's a dispute.
Okay, and you would like mediation first, and then, binding arbitration second?
That'd be my preference. I think that's always the way to go.
Okay, well, sometimes you can skip and go mediation, straight to arbitration, if you agree on it, but this'll lay it out perfectly. Okay, thank you.
And then, the only other, only other item I had on this, I think that this is a good deal for the city. I've said in the past that I think that the value of the incentive should be tied to the value of the land that's purchased for the dealership, and I'd still like to see that. I'd like, and I understand that that may not, that if the land is not in escrow or closed yet, that we may not know that number, but I would like to have a discussion here at the board level about tying the incentive to the value of the land.
And I think Mr. Russell's prepared to have that discussion.
So, then, for me too, when I was reading through the agreement, I recognized that it indicates it won't start until we have 30 full-time employees, but I question whether the language is strong enough to say, is that then throughout? So, once it starts at 30, they have to maintain the 30, so I think we need a little bit stronger language to ensure that it's ongoing, that I get to keep the 30. It's not one month or one quarter worth. And then, I'd like, again, for us to have the discussion of what if, five years in, the agreement, it drops down to 20 employees? And so, I'd like to have that open discussion with you. So, again, everything's on the record, and it's very clear, and that the quarterly Dieter report or something would be sufficient for the validation for staff to recognize your, so I'd like to have that.
I just want to indicate for the record that the I just want to indicate for the record that the applicant has nodded his head and agreed to have that discussion.
I agree with Laurie, we need to tighten that up a little bit somehow, and I'd like to have more than just a, he wants to hire Carson City people, and I do recognize it's a tight labor environment, so some kind of a percentage, but if you drop below 30, that percentage wouldn't hold, it would require whatever it was, so I don't know, whatever, I'm just throwing this out, 70% of the employees are from Carson City, and then if it dropped below 30, whole thing might go away, but at least you'd retain that level that was there. Secondarily, I have a question for you, City Manager, what about the left turn lane on north moving traffic?
So that's actually a very good question. So as you're coming north on South Carson Street, if you remember, part of our design, we have a traffic circle at Sonoma. So, and I've shared our design with Mr. Russell, so he hasn't, he's had an opportunity to review it. So it's going to be important, based on where that traffic circle is, and speaking with the traffic engineers, and I think the city engineer is still in the room, he may, if we get into a more detailed discussion of this, I may need to bring him up. But for the traffic flow coming out of the circle, as traffic goes northbound through the circle, we are going to ensure there is a left turn lane to get into the prospective, and I don't think he's closed on it yet, but to get into the prospective property that I know the business owner is looking at. So we have agreed to ensure that the design of that traffic circle will ensure an adequate left turn lane to get into his property. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. If he's closed on it, I'd question his business acumen. My next question is, and this probably would be addressed when he comes up, I wonder if he'd be amenable to going 25 years instead of 20 on his commitment to stay in Carson City, but we'll talk about that when he gets here.
Any further board comment?
We need Chris.
Okay.
So again, before I bring Chris up, I just want to summarize. The only thing the city is doing upfront is moving forward that driveway part of our South Carson Street project. This is purely a tax rebate program. The city is not providing any funds upfront to Mr. Russell. This is purely based on the business owner having 30 employees and generating tax revenue for the city.
We, for the record, Nick, shall we let folks know where the property is, which is the old Kraft Market location? Welcome.
Thank you, it's good to be here. I'd like to thank, obviously, the Board of Supervisors, as well as the citizens of Carson City for taking the time this morning to hear us out. Hopefully, we don't bore you. We'll try to be quick, I know the agenda today looks pretty long and lengthy, so with that, thanks for taking the time to meet with us today, and Nick, we will jump right in. So my name is Chris Russell, and I own a dealer group called Chris Russell Dealerships. And with me here is Paul Stevens, he is the CFO, he's our Chief Financial Officer. And just to give you a rundown of the current dealerships that we operate, we own Pocatello Nissan, and that's the top slide there, that's in Pocatello, Idaho, and we purchased that dealership about four and a half years ago, as well as Pocatello Kia, the next one was purchased about four and a half years ago. Approximately two years ago, we acquired Quad Cities Nissan, and that's in Moscow, Idaho. It's kind of on the border of Pullman in Moscow, and we've operated that Nissan dealership for approximately two years. And we had the good fortune, a little over a year ago, to purchase Bellingham Nissan, which is just about two hours north of Seattle, in a little port city, and it's beautiful. So those are the dealerships that are currently in our portfolio. So, we currently have, what, and I know you can't read that, but the Board of Supervisors have a copy of this, this is what is called a letter of commitment, and the letter of commitment is from Nissan Motors to myself to operate a Nissan facility and dealership in Carson City, so we have the rights to that facility. And I think it's worth noting how a letter of commitment and a commitment from Nissan to me takes place and happens. So they have something, some measuring criteria, something called SSER, which is your state sales efficiency rating, and if you're at 100%, so what that means is, do you sell cars, here's your primary market area, they call it PMA, if they say annually, you should sell 100 cars, you're 100% efficient. You sell 90 cars, you're 90% efficient. They look at the top performers, usually it's about the top 3% to 5%, and those dealerships would be in excess of 150% to 200% efficient, and three of our four stores are there now, and one's just right close. So we are a high-producing, high-volume operation. And the second metric, the matrix that they look at really closely is your customer satisfaction. So they're really interested if you sell cars, but they're just as interested if you can do it the right way, and you can keep customers happy, have repeat business, and do the right thing for the right reason. So, and our customer satisfaction puts us in that, again, about 5% of all the Nissan dealers in the country, which is why they've asked us to come to Carson City with Carson City Nissan. So, the mission without, throughout our company, I'll read it to you, "Our mission is to simply be the best in every area of our business. We accomplish this by providing a world-class customer experience, being the best place to work, and strongly supporting our community, all while working together as one." In all of our dealerships, we have core values, and these core values are on the wall, that little picture on the left is actually a picture from one of our dealerships. And I believe, we're not in the car business, I'm in the people business, and I believe a dream with the wrong team is a nightmare, and this is where it starts, is our onboarding process, it starts in the hiring process. And we look for ways with our core values of integrity, we look for ways in the interview process to eliminate the candidate from having an opportunity to work within our group, then including them. And so we have a pretty stringent hiring process on the way in to make sure we get the right people on board that we make sure we can grow with and succeed with. So, our core values are integrity, we expect all of our employees to have a servant's attitude, from the leadership or management level, that means the manager, the leader serves the associate, and that means from the frontline and the associate level, they serve the community, they serve the guest, they serve the customer. We're a high accountability culture, some people don't like that, and they don't last long. We expect results, we expect you to do it the right way, we hold you accountable morally, ethically, to do the right thing. Continuous improvement is another one of our core values, teamwork, and the last one, fun. I'm a big believer that the fun sells. If you can create a culture that's fun to come to work, and people want to come to work and they get excited, they're going to produce more, they're going to be happy, their fulfillment level is going to be where they are top producer and appreciate and love coming to work. So, each year, and we did this, this was actually a two-year campaign, we have a vision for the year, and throughout the company, we have, that says Sweet 16, which then went to Sweet 17, and the suite stands for "Serve with Excellence Every Time." There's that word again, we're big into serving, and again, that's not just serving the customers, that's serving the community, that's the leader serving the associate. We believe that vision is not a destination thing, it's a daily thing, we're not going to get there unless we do, we have a culture of EdMed, every day means every day, there's a lot of things that are expected of every associate every day. So, this is a picture in one of our waiting rooms, it says "The Keys to Education," and on there it says "You're not living unless you're giving," and we're going to get to some of the service stuff we do in the, throughout the dealerships, and we have, at the Christmas party, we celebrate all the wonderful things that we've done throughout the year in the community to give back, and I always say, it's not what we made last year, it's what we gave last year, and that's just that extra element of fulfillment within the associates, because there's got to be an extra why, and it can't just be a paycheck, their why's got to be bigger than the money, and we try to create that culture. So, with, in one of this here, in one of our dealerships, well, excuse me, in all of our dealerships, we have Powering Community Wall. And what we do is, we'll have either a monthly campaign or a quarterly campaign of what we're doing within the dealership to either give back or support something within the community. Here, this, those little stars there, that's a Make-A-Wish campaign, to where we, usually in July, seems to be the month that we do that, we'll go on to the next one, sorry, we'll get to that, it's Make-A-Wish. We have a Make-A-Wish campaign, and usually the month of July, we take $100 for every car that we sell, and we donate it to the local Make-A-Wish, and that's something that I think our employees really like, that campaign. Flag Day, we're proud to say that we try to fly the highest flag in the cities of which we serve, so hopefully we'll have a nice big flag out front, and we are very community-driven in the flag. We, as you can see, we honor Flag Day, we have veterans come out, and it's good for the employees, and they absolutely love it. This one is probably my favorite campaign we have. As I share with the campaign, you guys probably know why, but Thank-a-Cop is, I think that they're underappreciated, their level of service is enormous, we appreciate what they do, and we need to be a little more vocal about appreciating what the men in blue do. So what we do is, every year, we partner up with a radio station and/or a TV station, and they get behind it as well, and we ask for nominations of local service members, or excuse me, local police in, within the communities that we serve, of police that have gone above and beyond, above and beyond the call, and we'll get some really cool letters coming in, and emails coming in, and they read them on the air, and it's a really cool campaign. And then at the end of the campaign, we'll invite 40 to 50 of these police officers and some first responders to a big banquet, we feed them a nice meal, and then there's kind of a winner. And what the winner gets is a trip to Mexico, on us, we pay for everything, and that gentleman that won two years ago, they're in that center photo, he had, he went, he won, and his wife came after that presentation of that trip, and she was just in tears, and this is why we go to work, and she was in tears, and she said, "You won't believe it, we just got married 45 days ago, we don't have money for a honeymoon," and we didn't even plan that, right, I mean, we didn't know that, right? And so it was awesome to see that we were able to send him on a honeymoon. We do a similar promotion with Teacher Feature, we believe that the keys are education, and we get behind the schools, and we do the same thing with Teacher Feature, we partner with the same radio station and TV group to get behind that, and we send a teacher on a trip to Mexico, paid for by us as well. And we support local schools, we buy jerseys, we donate cars, if there's a need, it seems as if, as you do this, you'll get more and more requests, so we try to help as many as we can, and we appreciate doing that. The Food Bank, November is Food Bank Month throughout the group, is, we do the same thing, every car that we sell, we get a certain amount of money, and we donate to the Food Bank of Idaho, we donate to the Food Bank of Washington, and hopefully we're going to donate to the Food Bank of Nevada. So why are we here? We talked about this, it's because you're probably tired of looking at that building, I'd guess, and we'd like to take that building and have it look like that, Carson City Nissan. So with that, I'll turn some of the time over to Paul.
Let me just address briefly the economic impact over 15 years, it's good to be here with you. So what we think, and as Mr. Morano suggested in his opening comments, over a 15-year period, we're going to sell, based on Nissan USA's objectives for us, and what we feel like we can accomplish, we're going to sell over $630 million of sales in vehicles. That will equate to nearly $48 million of sales tax generated, and of that $48 million, just under $15 million in that range will come to Carson City. And so when you consider the economic impact of what our dealership and what our proposed investment will do, is to bring that kind of money locally. And right now, I should state that some of those taxes, when people buy Nissan vehicles now, they're leaving the area, and that sales tax is being paid in other areas, we can, a large portion of those retained sales will now come back into Carson City. And so that's really a huge economic impact, and then what we're requesting to do is a $3.5 million incentive. And the question is, is how did we arrive at that, and what, how did we come up with that figure? So, let me just briefly tell you that we are going to spend on our land value, we're going to spend between $2.7 and $2.8 million to acquire land. The build-out, the hard cost of the build-out will be about $5.1 additional dollars. In addition to that, we will have to put in, do survey costs and appraisal costs and other hard costs that go in to this, and then furnish the building with furniture, fixtures, and equipment, lifts, our service department has to be put in place, lighting, pavement, curbs, gutters, all this stuff. So I'm anticipating, and our budget suggests that we're going to have hard costs of over $8 million by the time that we're done with this. In addition to that, we have operational costs of inventory and working capital costs and other issues that come up. So my budget suggests that we're going to be investing in Carson City about $13.1 million, between $13 and $14 million into this community before we sell one vehicle. That's a huge commitment, and so the $3.5 million, as opposed to a $13.1 million overall expenditure, I've suggested to Mr. Russell here that that exceeds our risk tolerance level. $13.1 million exceeds our risk tolerance for this project, it's more expensive than we anticipated. To make it, to bring it back within the scope and the framework of our project, the $3.5 million is essential and it's critical to making this a viable project. We do not want to start off on the wrong foot, we want to be successful from day one, and this will help us do that. We want to go put this project in the redevelopment area, and South Carson Street could use a nice, beautiful, big Nissan dealership here, and we're excited to be able to invest that kind of money here. We recognize Carson City as a great opportunity for the city and for us, I think it'll be a great business opportunity. So with that, we'll just move on to say why Carson City.
As we've talked about jobs, Mr. Morano has talked about jobs, and we talked about jobs, and Mr. Morano has spoken about jobs a little earlier, and we think that number, the ramp-up number, is 30, and so we feel very comfortable with that number. We anticipate getting closer to 35, 40, I'd love to have 50, because as, the more cars you sell, the more infrastructure you're going to need. Would I love to commit to that now, because that's the plan. So we feel comfortable with that 30 number, we believe it's going to be more than that, because we believe that Carson City is a city that we were really, really going to thrive in, and we're looking forward to that. So, with that, we're going to have Nick play this in one second.
Sorry.
That's okay. Is what you're going to see is one of our commercials, and the people in the commercial are not actors, they're employees of the dealership. And what we do is, we have a campaign where we give, it's an option, we give all of our employees an option to volunteer in the community for four hours a month, and we pay them to do it. So they don't have to punch out, okay, they just go do it. And we're pushing our employees to go out in the community on our time and our dime, and in one of our stores, in the peak of this promotion, which it started in 2016, in the peak of this promotion, we almost had 40% of our employees that are out in the community four hours a week on our dime. And then they would come back, and they would tell us how great it was, and we would love it. And so then we said, you know what, we probably should do a commercial about this. And so we did a commercial, and the people you see working on the fence at the Greenway Project, and one of the gentlemen is in our service department, he's been with us 46 years at this dealership. Jeff, he is our master service technician at one of our dealerships, and he volunteers at that old food bank, still does to this day, and he gives us four hours over two weeks, so he's an overachiever. So that's the people in this video that you're going to see this commercial.
It truly is important to me that the people that work at Pocatello Nissan Kia are the people that you want to know. Hi, Chris Russell, owner of Pocatello Nissan Kia, and here we do business differently. For me, it isn't just important that our employees work hard to keep the business running, but also that they work hard to keep the community running as well, from the Idaho Food Bank to the Port Neve River Greenway. Every time you do business with us, it has a real impact. you do business with us, it has a real impact right here in our community. And you know what? It's working. Come be part of something different at our new location at 1900 Flandreau Drive in Pocatello, right next to the Gold's Gym, where you always get tires and oil for life. Pocatello Nissan Kia, the people you can trust.
We've been running this campaign for about three and a half, four years, almost four years. And we see a lot of other businesses within the community, all of a sudden, not all of a sudden, doing a little bit more than they might have before as far as supporting stuff because they see that this, this business opened or was acquired and the volume went from here to here. How are they doing it? This must work. And that's not why you do it. But if your business is working, then it affords you liberty and graciousness to do that. So we see a lot of people copying the plan a little bit in the markets we serve and that's good. That's good for the community. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Paul.
Okay, so there was some discussion about the jobs that we had here, 30. We're in the contract, we're committing to 30 jobs. We can hit that. And, but they, these jobs are full-time jobs. We need full-time master technicians, sales associates. We need people that live here. So are they Carson City residents? We cannot run this operation on a handful of part-time employees. These are good paying, full-time jobs and these people have to live in this community to be able to work in our dealership. So 40 new jobs, that's a huge payroll that we're going to have infused into Carson City. These people will be well-paid and they'll be good members of our community. So I don't think that the jobs issue is really, I think we can meet that with no problem. It'll be a real benefit to the community. The second thing is the retained county taxes, $10 million. That's, we think that will generate almost $15 million and then net of the incentive back to us on the rebate, that the county will, or the Carson City will benefit to the tune of about $10 to $11 million. That's real money and that goes right to the general fund. That's where roads are paid for and potholes are paid for and curbs and gutters are maintained. This is a great investment. And a lot, to some degree, this money is exiting the community right now because Nissans are being purchased outside of the area. So we're going to bring that home. And then also that lot that we're looking at purchasing has an assessed valuation right now of $600,000. We're going to take that assessed valuation up to $7 million and we'll be taxed on that and we'll pay that tax. So that's, we think that that could be an extra $1.2 million in property taxes to the, to the area. So the new franchise, we are excited to bring a franchise that is not currently available in Carson City. Nissan is a great brand. I think the economic impact to this town is, is material and substantial. And I've recommended to Chris that if we can get this within the cost framework that we need, that we really need to move forward on this because this is a good opportunity. And I'm looking forward, we're looking forward to moving into Carson City.
Okay. So this last slide here, Nissan is America's fastest growing auto brand. So that's not a slide that we created. That's actually a billboard that Nissan has up. They do TV ads and they tout themselves as America's fastest growing auto brand. So in this market of Carson City, Nissan's running these ads and ads similar to this one. They're running these ads and ads similar to this one and touting themselves as America's fastest growing auto brand. And then the customers here in Carson City are going to Reno and they're buying their Nissan and bringing it back. So we hope with the good fortune of the board that we can bring this Nissan dealership to Carson City. And with that, that's the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nick, can you just briefly discuss how what is being proposed differs from what we've done with the other car dealers in the past, just for public record?
Sure. So I think the main difference, Madam Chair, the only, the only thing that we're going to do upfront is provide the commercial driveway. Everything else is a rebate based on the sales tax generated by the business once they hit that 30 full-time employee number. So the other deals, each one of them are different and obviously there's been a couple amendments to each one of them. But, but the previous auto incentive deals involved either money or property, sometimes both upfront. So there's no money, the taxpayer's not footing any additional bill for this specific agreement. So it's purely a sales tax rebate. We're going to rip up all that curb, gutter, sidewalk, driveway on Carson Street and put all new ones in anyway. We're just going to move that part forward. So I think that's the main difference between the previous and the current auto incentive deals.
I appreciate that. And Brad?
I just wanted to read something into the record here too. The Carson City Redevelopment Area 2 was created in 2004. And when it was created by resolution, here's what it says. Whereas in 2004, the Carson City Redevelopment Authority and Board of Supervisors approved an ordinance that adopted the redevelopment plan for a new redevelopment district, redevelopment district, redevelopment project area number two along South Carson Street, recognizing that Carson City's franchise dealers of new cars and vehicle-related sales provide a substantial portion of Carson City's annual sales tax revenue. And then it goes on. But the whole purpose of Redevelopment Area 2 is to potentially provide incentives for franchise new car dealers.
So as I'm thinking of this agreement in comparison to the other ones, so part of it is you worry about, okay, if they're going to buy a Nissan now, did they not buy a Ford or did they not buy one of the other dealerships in Carson City? So are we trading where the dollars go? And I'm going to assume that a small percentage probably would trade. But when I look at the way the agreements are structured with the car dealers that we have incentives with, the city won't be harmed one way or the other because it would just change which dealership the incentive goes to. So I wanted to put that on the record too. Just again, the taxpayer would be held even, just trading between which dealer would get the incentive. So I'm pretty comfortable with that, that we're not going to actually have a net loss of revenue to the city. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've said in the past, and I'll restate it, that I'm not a big fan of these kinds of things. I think economic development works, but I think when you're in business, you come to the table with expenses and you know them upfront. I listened with interest to the, our CFO, the Nissan CFO's analysis of why they need their $3.5 million over 15 years. However, this is of course, different from the previous incentives. And I went on record regarding the previous incentives, I think I voted for something but said, I don't like these generally. And, and I think you need to have some provisions for clawbacks. I think you have to have some guarantees of what's going on. So with that, not saying that I'm going to vote for or against because I still have an open mind on this. I'm curious as to, A, whether you, Chris, would think in terms of a 25-year commitment rather than a 20-year commitment to this community, if we wrote that in? And if you would tie down a provision regarding jobs? It's very nice to hear that your intentions are to have local people, but you might have to bring some from outside. And I recognize that you might have to bring some from outside because you have corporate culture. You want to get people that you know and that will work in some of the top positions. But would you make a commitment to provide half the jobs at least being hired locally if you can find the right people?
The intention is to hire as locally as possible. That's the intention. With that, I think 50% is a fair, I think that's a fair number. But you do have in the structure, you do have some corporate people that would be coming in and to take some of our competitors. One thing I don't want to do is come in and take some of the competitors on Caro, the Ford gentleman's general manager and got the Toyota store's service department, highly unlikely. But we have to look at, we have to have a certain skill level to be able to perform and pay back the enormous amount of risks that's out there. So that, the intention is definitely going to be there to hire at least 50%. I think it'll be greater than that. But I can't go to the other dealerships because I don't, you can't, that's not how you serve with excellence every time and be the guy that you can trust when they're like, oh my gosh, this guy's been here three months, I lost 10 people. So I'm going to have to find the people and I don't know the town. I don't know the city. I don't know if people are clamoring for jobs in Carson City, wanting to come to work at automobile dealerships. But that is the intention.
Could I make a comment? To some degree, this is beyond our control. When you look at, at more macro issues, does Carson City have affordable housing? Do we have ample affordable housing? Do we, does Carson City attract the job opportunities that we have here? And so we are providing job opportunities. We need to fill this job. We need to run the dealership. We need, we're probably going to hire 40 or so people to get this dealership running. But it, but some of these issues are beyond our control too. And especially issues like affordable housing is huge for us because not everybody in our dealership is going to earn $200,000 a year. So, so anyway, that's just a comment for consideration that if we have to commit to something, we need to know that the community and the city provides all the other elements that would help us to survive, like housing and, and other opportunities like that too.
I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, if I'm talking about people who already live here, that, that part of it's already taken care of. But let me be a little more forceful. Would you agree to language in this agreement that said at least 50% of the people would be from Carson City if that's feasible? I recognize you can't hire somebody who can't do the job.
If that's feasible, yes, sir.
And what about the 25-year rather than the 20-year commitment on this?
I don't know. My intention's not to move the dealership anywhere else. You know, with this sizable investment here in Carson City, I don't, I don't know where else I would move it. I think it belongs here. I would, I would be okay with 25 years.
Okay. You have to understand that those of us who lived in Carson City, when we went through previous time when other dealerships were talking about leaving, we're a little wary of that. In your case, I take you at your word on that, but I'd like that language in there.
Just a question. So 25 years from now, I might be pushing up daisies by then.
Me too.
Okay. That's a quarter of a century. I think we could really agree that the Nissan dealership will remain here because when we invest nearly $14 million and put in a Nissan dealership here, but if events occur that either, that something might occur like a death or a disability of the owner, death or disability or other tragic thing. I mean, there are things that could happen in a quarter of a century. So I think we need to be a little bit careful on those and recognize that, that a quarter of a century is a long time.
So is 20 years.
That's, that's true.
Thank you. And another question that has nothing to do with whether the agreement flies or not. Why is it Nissan and not Nissan Kia as you have in Pocatello?
We're in negotiation with Kia currently, but we, I can't commit to anything now.
So that's possible. You just can't say yes?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay. I may have some more questions, but let me see here. I've got notes here. I'm an old newsman. I get notes. Yeah. No, that took care of it. Thank you.
If I could, go into John's comments about having a requirement to keep the dealership in Carson City for 25 years. Our only recourse under this agreement is to end the incentive if the dealership leaves. And the incentive only runs for 15 years. So I believe it's a moot point. It doesn't matter. After 15 years, we'd have no recourse to hold you here anyway.
I say that's a good point, Brad, but I, I think that I'm trying to make sure that we get all we can out of this situation, but you're, you're right about that.
Yeah, I agree with you and I've made the point on the other dealerships in the past, but I just don't know how we can enforce it.
And I just have a comment with regards to employees. Being an employer ourselves, you have to draw the best from where you can. So, you know, I don't, I know you will try to at least employ locally, but I also understand that you probably have to go to the regional area in order to accomplish what you need to. So.
I was just going to say, if this agreement is approved, I think I'd like to see, next time we go through a budget analysis, that we allocate some or part or all of these funds of the increment that's here to roads, to the RDC. I'd like, like to have that discussion at the board. That's not for today, but I think I'd like to see that happen. Second, you know, we've been through the Nissan issues before and not speaking out of school, but you know, we weren't really the first choice on that one. And what, so what really kind of helped me come along with a decision is when they brought the Nissan, the representative from corporate Nissan out here and I could talk to him about, you know, is this for real that you really want to come to Carson City? Or is this just a foot in the door to come somewhere else? And the third thing is I think, you know, this is, this agreement really is one where it's based on performance. And I, and I get that. And so I think that's a difference from what we've done in the past. I tend to agree with what Supervisor About said, you know, you've got to be careful about, I want everybody to come, every employee to come from Carson City too, but that's probably not in the cards. And 50% fine. And I can live with 20 years. I mean, I agree with what Supervisor Bunkowski just said. I think, you know, this thing really goes for 15 years and that's it. I mean, after that. So, and I think it's also important to have, you know, I know that we've, we've done due diligence on what you've done, you know, to support some of the statements you've made here on community involvement. We've done some due diligence on that and those are real things. So anyway, that's just some comments to you.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with the mayor's comments. And, you know, what really sold me, Chris, on you is the difference between this experience and our previous experience with Nissan. You know, I have your spreadsheet with your projections on here, which I believe are very fair and accurate. If anything may be understated, that wasn't our experience before. You've been very forthright and open in your negotiations. And, you know, I'd just like to tell you that I appreciate the way that the two of you have come here and presented yourself because as I told you when we met originally, I had a very bad taste in my mouth from our experience with Nissan previously. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So hello again. Do you have any issue if we update the contract to say continuous 30 FTE instead of just you reach 30 and then the agreement kicks off? Because again, I don't want any issues 10 years from now or five years from now. So if we were to put that it's a continuous 30 FTE to qualify for the incentive package.
Thank you, Supervisor. We have no problem with continuous language. But I have to raise another issue. The first tier of operation, the, the, the language needs to be something like, because we're not going to go, the first month, we're going to have 10 employees and the next month, we're going, or the next month, we might have 25 employees. And then by the end of the year, as we build this dealership and get into our third and fourth month, we're going to have 40 employees probably. So I think the, but, but I think that the incentive should go back to the very first car we sold. If we hit 30 employees in that calendar year, then, then we'll file our sales tax reports and that should be what the sales, the incentive is determined on. I think that needs to be clarified a little bit in the language, but that's just my suggestion.
May I continue? So, so let's talk about that. So are you saying in year that you want to count the entire first year if you hit 30 FTE anywhere in the year? I think we're going to have to come up with some language that we could all feel comfortable with because I'm looking for sustained FTE. So again, I don't want you to hit it for one month. What, you know, let's play out what scenario we You know, let's play out what scenario we could all be comfortable with.
Absolutely. There's a building period. We're going to build to 30 to 40 employees, but it's not going to happen in that first month. And so, but, and then, and in year two, three, and four, up to 15, we will maintain.
You have to maintain it.
Continuous. And I think that we are happy with that language, that's okay.
So are you saying in year one, so long as you have 30 employees for at least a quarter, and then thereafter, you're, you'll maintain 30? Is that what you're trying to go to? Somewhere in, in the first year, you have to do it for at least three months consecutive, or you're not eligible?
Sure.
And thereafter, you have to maintain 30?
Yes, and we could even tighten it even further than that, if by year end, we need to have it within the quarter, and then by year end, we have to have it at year end as well.
Oh, continuous, yeah.
Continuous, right.
And then, continuous for years after that.
Does that work for you guys?
We can tighten that up.
Let's talk about that.
No, I mean, I get what you're trying to do, and I think, you know, language could be working, but I think continuous, to me, rings some bells. I mean, suppose you make it this year, you don't make it next year, you're going to come back this year and clawback?
He doesn't get it.
Well, I mean, you get it this year, next year, you don't make 30, but you're on an obligation for, not saying, I mean, continuous, to me, means if you, if you don't continue to have 30 during the, during the entire period, everything you've received prior to that, where you have met that 30, you give back.
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean clawback.
But that's what, that's what continuous means to me in terms of, I mean, when we're talking about enforcement of this agreement. So my, my sense is, is that, is that what you want to say is, is sort of what's in here already, is it, and I don't want to negotiate in public here, but, or, we can do that if we want. But, but at the end of the day, I think, you know, if you have some criteria during the year, that you're going to make it, what you're going to do during a year, and at the end of the year, and that's verified, and that's every year, as opposed to continuous, I mean, that's just the word, I mean, that's just the lawyer in me.
Okay, that, and that's.
You've got your own lawyer, so.
That's our intent, Mayor, that's, that's our intent. But we have no problem with 30 employees, no, no problem.
And year by year is what I meant.
Yeah, I think I.
Right. You don't get the money for the year if you don't meet the condition.
I have a question, and in the spirit of wheeling and dealing. On the incentive package based on, on our, what was drawn up back in 2005, it said the incentive package will be no greater than 20% of the basic city-county relief tax and the supplemental city-county relief tax revenue. And this agreement is for 30%. What would be the appetite to make that incentive, 3 million as opposed to 3.5?
You're breaking up. I'm just kidding. You know, I think that there's, I think Carson City needs this Nissan dealership, and I'm sold, I'm all in. I have met city officials in the other cities of which I serve, and I can tell you that Carson City's lucky to have you five up there, as well as Nick. And I don't want any part of this to be a bad, for anybody in this room to have a bad feeling about anything. And if you guys walk out and say, oh, my gosh, we did three and a half, we felt comfortable at three, and you're not comfortable with it, then I wouldn't be, and for that reason, I'd be okay at three.
I believe you're on, already on the record as a CEO, that you could live with the 50% and at least try, try to reach that. And as I understand it, we can do the Dieter check quarterly so that we can monitor this 30, 30 employees thing pretty easily, can't we, Nick?
I don't know. I'm looking over at Nancy because I'm not sure if we have access. I'm sure the business would have to agree to provide us that report. I'm not sure if I have the ability to go to Dieter and draw it on my own. If it was some type of a quarterly report that is already prepared and submitted, I would be very comfortable verifying that on a quarterly basis, if that's what the board's pleasure and direction is. As long as it's, you know, we don't have to go do an audit or something like that. If it's, it's a, if it's a report that's already prepared, we can review it and say, yes, he did or did not meet the requirement for the quarter. I'd be happy to do that.
And in terms of the 50% level, I, I'm not really too concerned about the idea of everyone, or even 50%, being from Carson City the day you hire them. I originally considered saying, oh, you've got to go back a year, but be that as it may. If you're bringing them here, and they're going to be full-time employees and buy a house here, I would, I would consider that. But I still want to see that 50%. I take your CFO's point that, that they're going to have to have housing, so they'll come here, buy a house, and stay here, I assume. I, I'm confident the upper echelon would. So, as I say, you are, you are comfortable with the 50%, Chris?
Let me ask, at what point do they then become, like, if we bring some, I don't know how we're going to manage or measure that. If we bring somebody in, and then they purchase a home, at what point do they then become, they're now a Carson City resident, at what point do they?
I think, I think that's when they become.
I think the spirit of, I'm okay with the three, and we're going to give it our absolute level best to be substantially more than 50% without being tied to it. Because ultimately, you want us to win and succeed, and if we're, if we're caught in between trying to win and succeed in this provision, that could be problematic.
Okay, thank you.
I want to go revisit what Lori was talking about. I want to make sure that I understand. First of all, the, the incentive doesn't begin until you hit the 30 full-time employee mark, so.
Correct.
Right, so.
The eligibility for the incentive begins.
But is it year by year?
Well, it says the city will begin to allocate to participant a portion of effective at the time, so it wouldn't start until you reach that 30 employee benchmark. So in year one, it's not going to be for the full year, it's going to start with the quarter in which you reach that 30 employee benchmark. I just want to make sure that that's the way the agreement was drafted and intended.
That's the intent, yes.
Okay. On the Dieter reports, we make a payment to you annually, so I don't know that you need to review them quarterly. If you get them and review them annually at the time that the payment is made, it's less work.
We would obviously prefer that, but if the board's direction is to do it quarterly, and it's a report that's already generated, we can do that. I would prefer annual, but.
Yeah, if we're making the payment annually, then, yeah. And I believe that, that what Lori was getting at was an abatement of the incentive if you fall below the 30 employees. So not that you have to continuously employ them, but if you fall below the 30, then the incentive is abated for the quarters in which you don't meet that 30 employee benchmark.
Correct.
So if we're all clear on that as well.
Just for the quarters, not for the year.
Just for whatever quarter you don't make it, then you won't receive the incentive payment for that three months.
Perfect.
Activity that you can do annually, like you said, and you just analyze it.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good solution. And then, I already gave my comments on, on where I think the incentive dollar amount should be. I know that you've said that you can live with the 3 million, I've got to think about that, because I still think it should be tied to the, the value of the land. I had one more comment, which is slipping my mind right now. So I'll come back to it.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I can live with what we've talked about here. I'm not, I don't want to hold a hammer over anyone's head, but I would encourage you to reach that 30 and stick with it or above, because when I brought up the quarterly, what I was thinking was that what you would do is you'd check it, if you can't check it with Dieter quarterly, check it at the end of the year, and if they missed in a quarter, and that brings up the question of clawback. What is the appetite on this? Well, we'll get to that on the discussion level.
Well, and, and I think the clawback is that the incentive is abated.
Right.
I think we've already discussed that, so I think that's good.
Okay, good.
I did remember the final comment, too, and that's on trying to track where your employees are coming from. If you have 40 employees, and for some reason, there's a housing project that comes up in Dayton, and everybody can get a great deal on a house, and you have 10 employees or 11 employees that move out to Dayton, I don't want to be tracking that, frankly. I mean, I'm willing to take you at your word that you're going to set a goal and try to achieve it, but I don't know that we want to get in the middle of trying to track that on a quarterly or annual basis.
It's not ready to leave, it's not going to be produced on a report that the city can audit against. They'd actually have to get into an employee record, because the Dieter report's just going to alphabetically list all the employees, and you're going to be able to use deemed wage for full-time status and count to 30, so.
Or you could just rent 40 PO boxes in Carson City.
But that's not on a report, and I'd like to do really easily verifiable, already prepared reports. I don't want to make the dealership create separate records. So they already submit a sales tax report to the Department of Taxation, and your employee report will go to Dieter, so we can easily validate compliance with the contract.
So I think we're going to look at language, something like business agrees to employ good faith effort to maximize, I mean, we'll, we'll work the language. I don't want to run afoul of negotiating in a public meeting, Mr. Mayor, but we'll come up with a good faith, business will employ a good faith effort to maximize the percentage of employees who are Carson City residents. I mean, we'll, we'll work that out.
Mayor, I will work with Mr. Madsen, who is Mr. Russell's attorney, on this agreement. But just so you know, I've been taking notes, and this is what I have so far. And first is to provide for mediation and arbitration process. Second is to maintain 30 employees, or the incentive is abated for the quarter, and that's to be checked annually. Third is at least 50% of the employees to be Carson City residents, if feasible, and we'll massage that language. Fourth is that there's a 25-year commitment, is that still on the table? And then, fifth, the.
Five years out. Yeah, you can drop the 25.
Okay, perfect. And then the $3 million rebate, which I believe Supervisor Bonkowski is still thinking about.
I would like to just say that the reason I brought up the 25 here, we, we have gone through with previous, in previous situations like this, amendments to the agreement, and the amendments to the agreement were sold on the idea that they would stay longer. And so, you could come back and say, well, we'd like to amend this and leave in 12 years, but you won't. I understand that. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to protect the city. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I would like to know from the other board members how they feel on the, the value of the incentive. I mean, I've, I've put what I think on, on the record here, but I haven't really heard other than from you, Karen.
Well, let me say this, I understand, on, on that issue, you know, I, I agree with, with some, some sort of benchmark, and I, I get where you're getting at. To me, since this is a sales tax rebate program, I'm not overly concerned about that. But I will tell you, you know, that, and they're already moved down to $3 million, that's fine with me. I mean, but, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and I think, you know, they're going to put in $13 million, $7 million, that's hard cost. I think it's a fair, fair number to do. And given the fact that it's just a rebate, they either got to make it and perform, or they don't get it. I mean, I'm okay with that.
I knew that was coming next. Okay. So I tend to actually concur with what Brad's saying. I don't like to pick a number out of the hat, right? We're all in business, and, and I'm the little number cruncher on the board here, and so I like to have a reason and a rationale for the dollar amount that we select. So, why 3 million instead of the land cost? Which I think I also like to be a little consistent with what we did potentially with other dealerships, and was it based on a land purchase price? And I think you were saying that 2.8 for the land, is there other costs associated with the land purchase that would get you to 3 million? So, because I'm with Brad, I'd like to tie it to a rationale. I don't want to just pick a number out of the air. I'd like to say the incentive is based on, whatever. So maybe you can help me a little bit with that.
Yes, all the land, the initial acquisition of raw dirt is 2.8, close. But, but the improvements of the sewer and the water and the, and the parking and, and the electrical installations and the surveys and the soft costs that go into that will far exceed that amount. The other, the other comment I had to the supervisor is, if we ran a present value analysis, I don't want to get in the weeds on finance dollars, but if we ran a present value analysis on $3 million over a 15-year period and brought that back to today's dollars, it would be far less than 2.7 million. So, just, just saying.
You make a good point there. Money doesn't always stay in the same ballpark. I have a question that really doesn't relate to any of this, and that's, your picture up here showed the craft mart building being replaced by your building. I was told at some point that you're not actually buying the dirt in the craft mart, but the dirt in front of it. Am I wrong?
You're, that's in, we're in the middle of that, and I'd sure hate to.
Never mind.
Okay.
I understand completely.
That I don't like to negotiate with myself, and I think I would be.
All right, are there any other board comments? I'm going to ask for a public comment, then, at this point? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll try a motion, see where it goes. I move to approve an agreement between Carson City, Carson City Redevelopment Authority and Chris Russell pursuant to the incentive program for redevelopment project area number two, South Carson Street, Carson Auto Row. The incentive will be in the form of a 30% rebate of the basic city-county relief tax and supplemental city-county relief taxes generated by the new auto sales dealership located within Carson City redevelopment project area number two for a maximum amount of $3 million, subject to the following conditions, that there's an aspirational goal of 50% of the employees must be coming from Carson City, that the agreement is for 20 years, that the amount is 3 million, not three and a half, that there's a quarterly ratchet on whether or not they've made, they have met the three employee requirement, and it will be a dispute resolution clause that's standard with our other agreements.
Second. All those, and any discussion?
I just want to say that I can support this. Because there's a clawback, I would have liked a stronger one, but I think I can live with this. Need that clawback.
All those, and Lori?
Just on discussion, I want to say that generally speaking, I have not supported incentive agreements, and the reason that, so I'd just like to explain to the, to the public, the difference for me here is we're not giving you any money upfront, which is why I've opposed all the previous ones, because I didn't think it was right that the taxpayer pay you to come. And so, that's why I opposed the other agreements. This one is a revenue sharing, and so you have to perform to get the money, and so the taxpayer has no obligation to you. And so I just wanted to put on the record, that's why I support this one.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Mine's not working, so.
I think they voted.
All right. Motion passes. Welcome.
See ya.
It's not, it's not.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
When are you coming now?
Thank you.
Yeah. What's the date?
The, the next meeting will be in, in the spirit of what you wanted to talk about. So we'll, we're going to tackle the property next. So, thank you very much, we appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for one more public comment, period. Seeing none, we are going to adjourn the redevelopment authority and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and I'll turn the gavel back to the, the mayor.
Okay, and we'll take 10 minutes off. We'll be in recess for 10 minutes. All right, we're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We'll now take up the companion agenda item to what we just discussed in redevelopment. This is the agreement with Chris Russell for the Nissan Agreement. So unless there's an objection, is there any further public comment on this issue? Unless there's objection, then we will take all, incorporate by reference the entire record that we heard before the redevelopment authority and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an agreement between Carson City, Carson City Redevelopment Authority and Chris Russell pursuant to the incentive program for redevelopment project area number two, South Carson Street, Carson Auto Row. The incentive will be in the form of a 30% rebate of the, well, actually, let me go back to the beginning of that line and just say that I move to approve an incentive agreement based on the same terms and conditions as approved by the redevelopment authority.
Second.
Good motion. Okay, on a motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosen, aye, carried. Okay, thank you. All right, let's now take up...
Let there be light, yeah.
This is item 23, is that where I am? This is...
I have a disclaimer too.
Yeah, I got a couple of, this is item 23 Alpha. This deals with the Carstow Hospital bonding issues that we've taken up. There's disclosures we have to make. Karen, why don't you make yours? Brad, and then I'll make mine.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. I serve on the Greenhouse Project Board, a nonprofit organization. The Greenhouse Project is under contract with CTH to provide staffing for their foothail garden on their campus. The food that staff grows will be donated to the Carson City Meals on Wheels Program. The Ethics Commission has opined that where there is a private relationship or commitment that is substantially similar to that of a substantial and continuing business relationship, there exists a disqualifying conflict. However, I've also been advised that where the matter before me is not related to my private commitment and is far enough removed that a reasonable person in my position would not be materially affected, then I should vote. Here, my commitment to CTH through the Greenhouse Project is far enough removed from the bonding matter, I'll be acting on that my private commitment is not affected nor is the matter before me affected by my private commitment and therefore I will be voting on this matter.
Correct. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. Bruce Robertson, a broker in my real estate office, NAI Alliance, has represented Carson Tahoe Hospital in its real estate transactions. Cheryl Evans, my business partner in NAI Alliance, manages a portfolio of hospital properties and my partner Andy Wilson and I both serve on Carson Tahoe Citizen Advisory Board. Because of these relationships, a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by these commitments. Therefore, I will be abstaining from participating in this matter.
I have one. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My wife serves on advisory board for the Carson Tahoe Hospital and the matter before me today will not be affected in any way by my relationship with my wife and her service on the advisory board. She's not on the major board of the Carson Hospital. Therefore, a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected in this case. Therefore, I'll be participating. Any other disclosures? Okay, all right. Let's go. So what's going on with the feds?
Good morning. John Peterson with J&amp;A Consulting Group for the record. I think I'll start off by saying we've learned that tax reform is difficult. So, last time we were in front of the, in front of the board, there were some questions about the impact of proposed federal tax law changes. And at that point, we did not believe that there were any impacts to the city based on the bills that had been released at that time, which included the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, Act or HR1 in the House of Representatives. However, there are many changes to tax exempt bonds under that proposed House bill. There are some changes under the proposed Senate bill as well. The reason that this item is coming back before you is because one of those changes directly impacts the proposed transaction for the hospital because it would prohibit a type of bond called a private activity bond. These are bonds which are issued by a local government as a conduit issuer for a nonprofit 501(c)(3) or some various other qualified projects. And these are tax exempt bonds that I'm talking about. So when the original approval was given, we did not anticipate this change. However, now it's on the record. It has not been approved yet by the House, has not been concurred by the Senate, but it's out there. And so in bond world, if we have an active bill in Congress, it makes things kind of difficult. The prohibition would begin for any bonds that closed after December 31 of 2017. So the current transaction, as originally approved by the board, would have closed before that timeframe and the proposed transaction will close before December 31. However, because of this prohibition on tax exempt bonds for these type of projects, the hospital looked at this and I don't want to steal too much thunder. We have Ann Beck and Mike Pavlakis that can speak to the hospital situation, but they looked at the original resolution that was approved and they are seeking some changes. Primarily, the refunding portion of these bonds was originally approved as a variable rate transaction, is now being proposed as a fixed rate transaction, which basically takes out the market risk of anything happening, this bill being approved and the hospital kind of being stuck between a rock and a hard place after December 31 of 2017.
And the total bonding amount that you've got, 111 million, is the total bonds that they're asking for?
Yes, and it is the exact same number that was approved by the board earlier. It was just under two separate resolutions and two separate numbers, but this is the combination of both.
I think we understand what's going on and I think it's, as we mentioned, when this was before in the past, you know, we all up here knew that that was a potential possibility. That's why we're putting it out on the record to see, you know, want to make sure that if this happens, it's a good thing for the hospital, it's a good thing for our community. So I think we understand what's going on here. So I'd ask if there's any public comment. Mike and Ann, we don't need to, we'll go there in a minute if I've got public comment, but I think we know what's going on here. And it's the same thing, minor change, but it's the same thing that we voted on in the past.
Correct, and I will again reiterate for the record that there is no financial obligation of the city for these bonds. They are solely secured by the pledge of revenues from Carson Tahoe Hospital.
Okay. Board comments? Public comments? Anybody? Motion's in order.
Resolution number? All right. I move to adopt resolution number 2017R39, resolution authorizing the issuance of Carson City, Nevada Hospital Revenue and Refunding Bonds, Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Project Series 2017, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 111,73,000 to finance costs of acquiring, constructing and equipping additional health and care facilities and supplemental facilities for a health and care facility for the benefit of Carson Tahoe Regional Health Care, a Nevada nonprofit corporation, and to refinance certain obligations previously issued by the city for the benefit of Carson Tahoe Regional Health Care, making determinations as to the sufficiency of revenues, as to the other matters related to such project and such bonds, delegating to city officials the authority to determine certain final terms of the bonds and authorizing execution by the city of a loan agreement and indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, one or more escrow agreements if necessary, and certain closing documents in connection therewith, repealing resolution number 2017R37 and resolution number 2017R38 in their entirety, ratifying all consistent actions heretofore taken toward the issuance and sale of the bonds.
There's a motion, a second, and discussion... There's a motion and second, and discussion. Supervisor Barrett, John.
Thank you. I just want to, on the record, that this is a substantive change, but in this case, I don't think anybody will really care. This is good for the community, so I'm going to support it even though I know we're changing something here in the, from the intervening period. There's a good reason for it, I'm gonna go for it.
All right. Further discussion? Anybody on the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Posse nay, carried. Thank you very much, Board.
Abstention.
And for, yes, Supervisor Bunkowski abstain. Thanks. Okay. All right. Let's take up item 23B. This is, this is a second reading, right?
Adoption of a resolution.
Yeah, could we do the other? Okay, let's take up, who, you want to lead us into this one?
Sure. Again, for the record, John Peterson with JNA Consulting Group. This is a proposed resolution of intent for the board as part of the issuance process for the $4,875,000 of sewer bonds that we anticipate in 2018. This resolution of intent is a step that's required under Nevada law to issue the general obligation bonds that are additionally secured by the sewer revenues. This basically is the next step. We were at the Debt Management Commission of Carson City earlier this month, and they adopted their resolution. We take this step, and then we anticipate that in 2018, we'll be back in front of the board for adoption of a bond ordinance that would then authorize the issuance and sale of the bonds. At this point, the bonds are not authorized yet. We will go through that process, and it takes about three months.
And again, the purpose of the bonding? If you know, if we need to bring somebody else in here?
Uh.
It has to do with what's going on today.
It's, yes, it's for the stormwater program, and yes, it is for repairs to that system.
All right. I think we've discussed that a lot, and if there's, anybody wants to have further discussion, we could do that. Public comment? I don't see anybody.
Just ask a general question.
General questions in order.
So, just in general, it's for the stormwater, so I think it is important, right, that we put this on the record because it says it's sewer projects, but those are considered sewer projects?
Correct, yes, for the storm drain, their storm drain projects, and a lot of them are in Carson Street, Kings Canyon, Lakeview.
The ten projects we had identified previously, right? There was six.
Six projects.
They had more on the list, and we took the top six. I just want to put it on the record what we're doing.
Yeah, the ten-year CIP, and it's the top six.
Good call, good comment. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody? Public? Board? Motion's in order.
I move to adopt resolution 2017 R forty, a resolution of intent proposing the issuance of and authorizing the publication of notices relating to the general obligation limited tax sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,875,000 for the purpose of financing sewer projects for the city, providing the manner, form, and content of the notices, authorizing the city manager or city's chief financial officer to arrange for the sale of the bonds, and providing the effective date.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Posse.
Aye.
Carried, unanimous. Okay. Let's make sure then the board, the record should reflect that's a two-thirds votes, unanimous. All right. Let's now take up the supplemental, or the second round of CD, CDVG funding. There's some discuss, some disclosures here. Let me read one that I think applies to both Supervisor Bagwell and myself, and she can speak for that one. But it reads as follows. "NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participation when I have a disqualifying conflict. I serve on an advisory committee for Salvation Army. My role in this committee is not, I repeat, not, to fundraise. Where there's a private relationship or a commitment, there exists a conflict. However, here, my commitment is in a public capacity. My commitment is far enough removed from the CDVG funding that is before me, so I don't, so I will be voting on this matter, and I would also reflect that, to my knowledge, neither I nor Supervisor Bagwell had anything to do with the staff putting together this recommendation before us here today."
So, for the record, the disclosure would apply for me, for me also, that was just read into the record.
I'm sorry.
Do I have to read it all?
Yes.
Oh, I can't. Okay.
I thought I'd.
I thought we, no ditto's? Okay. No ditto's. "NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. I serve on an advisory committee for the Salvation Army. My role on this committee is not to fundraise. Where there's a private relationship or commitment, there exists a conflict. However, here, my commitment is in a public capacity. My commitment is far enough removed from the CDVG funding that is before me, so I will be voting on this matter today."
John.
Thank you. "NRS 281A requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My wife works for the Governor's Office of Economic Development. It administers HUD funding through its CDVG program. In fact, she's the administrator of the CDG program for the state. Though, the matter before us today may not be affected by my relationship, I have, I will recuse myself on CDVG funding, as I have done in the past, and will look into this matter further for future CDVG matters. Thank you."
Okay. And also, I think, I think I can say this safely for the record, all these three disclosures were discussed with counsel. I mean, so, we're trying to be very careful, folks, I mean, about how we do these things. All right. All right. So, Anna, you gonna take, take us through this? Okay.
Ana Jimenez, grants administrator. This is to recommend the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development approval of the Carson City FY18 second round of funding recommendations in the amount of 132,334 to implement programs associated with the Community Development Block Grant. All of the funding can be awarded to public improvement projects, and we have three applicants for public improvements. We have Public Works in the amount of 79,319. We have Yasmer Estates in the amount of $70,000, and the Salvation Army in the amount of $50,000. We have representatives for all three. The only thing that I want to add is that, after further research, I found out that the Salvation Army will, could, can't qualify until they have closed escrow. So, if they were to close escrow before December 30th, they could stand to qualify for the funding. And I have.
And that's because they're in the process of buying a building?
Yes. I believe in, in, Mr. Seer? Seer can answer my question, but when I spoke to Christie, his assistant, she said that they had put in an offer, and they were waiting to hear back from the seller.
Okay. Board, I think we should maybe just get a thumbnail from the applicants here to find out what's going on. So who's here from, what's the name of that one?
Yasmer Estates.
Yasmer.
We have Denise.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Denise Kuns. I'm the regional representative for accessible state, especially, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Accessible space, who owns and manages Frost Yasmer Estates.
Just tell us what Yasmer does. I think it's important for people to know what it does, and that goes to why it's qualified. And second, what you want the money for?
Okay. Frost Yasmer houses persons with disabilities who qualify for very low to extremely low income, and they're subsidized through HUD. And we're asking for the funds to replace the elevator. It currently is working, but it keeps breaking, and the parts that aren't available anymore for us, so we have to use refurbished parts. So it's just like putting a Band-Aid on the problem. So we want to be proactive to get it replaced before it completely breaks on us, and then we're in a, between a rock and a hard place.
Okay. Questions? Question, go, go.
So, the property here is actually part of a larger corporation, so can you explain why the parent company cannot take care of the elevator needs, and why it's necessary for us to try and participate?
Each property has its own funding through HUD. They're all separate entities, it's not, it's not all grouped together. They receive their own funding through HUD, the operating costs. So we're nonprofit, and we just get our operating cost from HUD. That's how we operate that building. We don't get any other funds from anywhere else.
Well, how does the parent company get its funds? Do you have to pay a percentage of what you do to administrative costs to the parent? I mean, somehow, you're part of a larger conglomerate here, so.
Right. We get our funding from HUD for our operating, and that set amount we have to use for the year. We can't roll it over, they'll take it from us if we don't use it. But we, I don't, I don't know if I know the answer to the administrative part of it, of the funds, how much we get to administer the building for staff. I'm not sure of that, but we can't use that money for repairs and to operate the building. We can only use the money that we get for operating costs, and then we have a reserve account that we have to have to, for repairs, for emergencies, and we have to maintain $1,000 per unit in that account at all times per HUD regulations, which is $24,000. We have 24 units.
I think, following up on that question, just to maybe clarify, I think what she was getting at, and maybe, is it, why doesn't the parent make the, make the contribution as opposed to having it done locally?
Let me look at my notes, I'm sorry.
I know, this is.
I'm not the person who usually does this.
Yeah, don't worry about it, I know.
I just got thrown in.
We've had people look at it, so don't worry. I mean, so if you, if you know the answer, though, it'd be helpful. And I think your answer is that you're a standalone, you're a standalone nonprofit that operates here in Carson City.
Correct.
Okay. And you, and you get HUD funding through the fact that, that your, that your parent company is HUD-qualified, or you're HUD, you're also HUD-qualified?
Each property is HUD-qualified. It's a, it's, we are, it's a contract, it's PREC 811. It's for persons with disabilities, is what the contract is.
Okay. All right. Brad?
So, to understand, when you say it's a standalone property, and that HUD gives you your funding for operating, but this, to me, doesn't fall under operating, it's under capital. So again, you may, or may not have these answers, but I'm looking at your balance sheet, and your replacement reserve account has a little over 102,000 in it. I just heard you say that you need to retain 24,000 in it. You have a reserve account with money in it to make replacements that has an available balance of about 78,000, if you keep your 24,000 in reserves. I'm really hesitant to provide more than 50% funding on, on, on a qualified project, and I'm looking at your bank statement, and it shows that you have the money to contribute more than you're saying you can. So I'm just trying to get a picture of, number one, is your funding for capital separate, and can your parent company help with that as opposed to HUD operating funds? And if you only need to retain 24,000 in your reserve account, then why is it that we're not seeing that reflected in the request?
He didn't put in the request the relocation of residents, which is. Sorry. He didn't put in the request for the relocation of the residents, which is, it's just an approximate amount of $30,000, and that's why it would bring us up to the 70,000 to take into consideration that we have to relocate all the residents during that time period that the elevator is being replaced, and we're gonna try to replace it within a week. We're gonna do an expedited replacement of the elevator.
So, let me, let me get that in my mind. What you're saying is, while the elevator will be down, so anyone that's utilizing the upper floors of the estates will have to be moved because they won't have access, they won't be able to get there?
Correct.
Are all of them in a wheelchair, need the elevator? There's, none of them are ambulatory with the stairs?
Some of them are ambulatory. We only have one elevator, so that would be their only means to get up and down from the second floor. So anyone who, we would offer it to everybody on the second floor, just so we don't have fair housing issues. So, but they have a choice not to take it if they don't want to. But we would offer relocation to everyone on the second floor.
And you're estimating that the cost for a week to stay somewhere else is $30,000? Is that 12 residents upstairs?
It'd be 12 residents plus the stipend. We have to give them $64 a day per, per diem.
If we have a picture, we'll see where we go. Okay? Any other questions? We'll see where we go with this. Okay?
I'm sorry.
I will see, I'm sorry, here, I've, here, I'm talking to you about speaking up, I should speak up. Thank you. We'll see where this goes. I mean, we got enough, I think. If we get initial, don't leave, because we got more questions. Don't leave the room.
I'll leave.
Okay. All right. Don't worry about it. You're doing fine, and sometimes difficult to be the pinch hitter and come up and speak in public. We get it, we get it. Don't worry. All right. Mr. Seer, Mark, come on up. Tell us what you're doing.
Well, for the past several years, we've been working towards relocating our building. In 2015, we did a needs assessment, and one of the results of that is that we needed a larger facility. In 2016, we did a feasibility study, and is it feasible for us to raise the money to move our building? And we found that we could raise about one and a half million dollars. We could sell our current building for about $500,000 and have $2 million to purchase a building and renovate it. At this point, right now, we have located the building. We're looking at 911 East Second Street, which is the old Great Nevada Credit Union Building, right behind the Sheriff's Department. It is about 8,500 square feet. It is our intention to add a commercial kitchen to it and a chapel to it, or multipurpose room, which will bring it to about 12,000 square feet when we're done. We had made an offer to the Great Nevada Credit Union, a lease with a option to purchase. I brought up, my boss from our divisional headquarters showed him the building, and he did not like the lease. He said that he could loan us $1 million to purchase the building. So, right, so we withdrew the lease with option. We've talked to the credit union. We're waiting for final approval on the loan. It is the Salvation Army's policy that we purchase property, do services in any one community by that, through the funds of the community. So we do have to pay back that $1 million when we purchase the building. So we are, we have applied for the block grant funds to help us with the commercial kitchen for the building.
Mark, what's the timing for this deal to close? Because that's of issue here.
Well, I should get permission any day, be able to present with the official offer, which, with negotiations, we believe it'll be answered positively immediately. Of course, they will have to meet with their board as well. And, and we are hoping to get into escrow and close before the end of the year. There's a lot of things that I'm not in control of, or, you know, when it gets into escrow, we'll see what happens. But it is, it is my hope to close before the end of the year.
Okay, but according to what Anna just told us, it, the deal has to be closed by, by December 31st, correct?
In order.
In order to qualify.
In order to qualify for the second round, yes.
When, when is the next round? Is it March, April, the next round of CDVG funding? March?
For fiscal year '19. The due date for the applications for the new year is January 16th, and so we would be able to keep it open that long for the second round in order to qualify for fiscal year '19 monies. Yeah, for the one, starting July 1, 2018.
Right. Okay. So, Mark, I have some. So, Mark, I have some experience with the seller of the property that you're looking at, having previously been the listing agent on that. And my concern is that approval of a purchase agreement takes a board action, which you mentioned, on the part of the credit union. And my experience with them has been that it can take 30 days just to get that approval. We're now in 16th of November. I don't see any way possible that you can close by December 30th. I just don't see it. So my recommendation, because first, I hesitate to allocate funding to an applicant that we don't even know is going to qualify. My recommendation would be to apply for the next round of funding after you've already closed on the building, and we know that we can actually give you the money and that you can use it. Because right now, first of all, I don't think you can close on the building by December 31st, and it would require us to then set that money aside on the hopes that you close, and then if you don't, we'd have to meet again and reallocate that to somebody else. So for that reason, I would really have difficulty approving the application today.
You know, I'm thinking, kind of along similar lines in a way. I was thinking, you know, if whatever's not allocated today, even if it's on a condition, if it's not allocated, all of it, or if there's a condition that says it has to be allocated or closed by the 31st, anything else by December 31st goes back to public works and our sidewalks. I mean, so people know where we are on the thing. And I tend to agree with you, I don't know where we're going to be on the Yasmer Estates issue, but I think that, you know, my sense is that it's a good thing that we've got additional CDGP funds. Boy. And that, you know, if we can make things work, fine. If we can't, then let's push to where we know that we've got to deal with, and that's sidewalks and curves and gutters. Okay, all right. Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Public comment?
Is Darren still here? I just would like to ask Darren about the public works project.
This is you.
Lucia.
He's giving it to you, so come on up.
Yeah, he's passing the buck.
Another pinch hitter.
I left the room, he was getting nervous.
Uh huh.
Good morning, Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager.
Okay. Lucia, my question is this. This money is proposed to repair sidewalks and so forth on Bath Street and some of those areas in the north corridor. We have the eighth of a cent that's going to be devoted to repairs in the north corridor. Is this project going to, are you proposing to do things that are in coordination with that design? I mean, we're not going to be allocating money so that it's going to be torn up when that corridor is improved, are we?
No, ma'am.
So you're coordinating what you're doing with what the intent of that area is?
Absolutely. So during the first round of CDBG funding call, we requested 200, roughly $230,000. We were awarded $150, roughly $1,000 in that first round from, to accommodate ADA ramp improvements from John to Bath. We've requested the additional roughly $80,000 from that original 230 request for ramps from John to Bath, and those are consistent and in coordination with designs for other improvements along that corridor. Should additional money be available in this, in this round, we would like to extend the geographic boundaries of that project up to Winnie. There are, you know, as you know, many cross streets there, and we'd like to make those ADA improvements at all of the crosswalks.
Okay. Anything? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody? Anna, want to weigh in on any of this?
I can give you options for numbers and amounts, and then you can go from there.
I'll see what you come up with.
Okay. So based on the 55%, or the willingness to fund 50% of the elevator, the first option would be to fund Yasmer Estates 55,000 and Public Works 77,334. Option two is to fund Public Works the full 79,000 that they asked for, and that would reduce Yasmer Estates to 53,015. And then option three is to fund Public Works the full amount of 132,034.
And what is that, what are you saying about Salvation Army?
As of today, we can't allocate any money to the Salvation Army. If we did, it would have to be contingent upon them closing.
So if we said, if the motion, and I'm just throwing it out, if the motion were approve, substitute condition of closing by December 31st, and if not, then it goes to...
Public Works.
Public Works. Does that work or doesn't work? I mean, just so we know an option.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, all right.
Anna, I have a question, and RSVP is off the table because they got funding before, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to hear from Supervisor Bunkowski about, from my own discussion here. I'd like to hear from, about what he thinks is appropriate, because I tend to agree with, you know, that there may be funding from other sources that are available for Yasmer.
So my feeling, as I stated, is that Salvation Army should come back after they've closed escrow. I'd feel much more comfortable if we knew that there was actual purchase there and we could allocate the money and know that it could actually be used. So my feeling is that we would give the 53,015 to Yasmer and the balance to Public Works, which I believe was 79,319.
Yes, that's correct.
But I would like to hear from Yasmer if we award the 53,015 if they feel that they're going to be able to move forward on the project, because if the answer to that is no, then I'd prefer to give all the money to Public Works.
Do you want Denise to come up and answer that question?
Only if she's comfortable doing it. She may not be the appropriate person to make that response.
Good idea, okay, that's a good idea.
Rather than hold up the process, why don't we just table this for 10 minutes? Let her go do what she's going to do, then we'll just take up the next agenda item. We'll go to 24A. You can go out, you can talk to them here or go outside. We'll be in recess for your item. We'll be, just, we'll hold on to about 10 minutes and come back when you're ready. Okay, all right. 24.
Okay, I have a disclosure.
God, Brad's got one too, so, okay.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private capacity, I'm an interior designer. Currently, I have a contract with Steve Neighbors for the Adams Trust to help design their offices on North Curry that Loomis and Associates are leasing. I don't have a business relationship with Loomis. The matter before me regarding Loomis is not affected by my private commitment to Steve Neighbors and the Adams Trust, nor is my private commitment affected by the matter before me today. Therefore, a reasonable person in my position would not be materially affected, and so I will be voting.
Unfortunately, mine's a little different. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private capacity, I'm a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. Loomis Engineering is a client of NAI. Because NAI's relationship with Loomis is a substantial and continuing business relationship, a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this relationship. Therefore, I do have a disqualifying conflict, and I will not be participating in this matter.
Any other disclosures? Okay, we got them. Who's going to do it? Ms. Ryder and Mr. Stuckey? All right.
All right. This is to approve the amendment number two to contract 1415-112 Downtown Carson Street Urban Design to Loomis and Associates. This will extend the contract terms through September 30th, 2018, and an increase of $238,900 for a total contract amount of $1,374,926.
And Mr. Stuckey is here to answer additional questions.
Good morning. Dan Stuckey, city engineer for the record. Would you like me to just briefly recap what, okay. So this is, as Laura mentioned, it's a design services contract specifically for the Curry Streetscape Improvement Project that we're going to be constructing this spring. It includes utility design, landscape design, roadway design, streetscape design, all of that. The reason for the amendment is the project scope has expanded, as I presented on the October 19th Board of Supervisors meeting. The project scope, now we're doing the LED streetlights, we're undergrounding the power, and then we've also added in those five cross streets which weren't included in the original contract. So it's an expansion of scope, so this design amendment will cover that. It also, the previous contract, the design services for Curry Street only went to the 90% design level, so this will also take it from 90% of completion of design, and it'll also add in a construction assistance task in there. So that's the reason for the amendment.
Just a correction, Dan, on page two of 11 on this amendment, under assumptions and exceptions. It states that we understand the current project schedule is for design to take place during the winter of 2017, 2018, and the construction of the project improvements to commence early spring, and it lists 2016. I think that's supposed to be in eight.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
Good read. All right. Any other questions to the board? Public comment? Anybody? For the amendment? Everybody understand what we're doing here? Okay, all right. Board? Motion's in order.
I move to approve amendment number two to contract number 1415-112 Downtown Carson Street Urban Design to Loomis and Associates, Inc., to extend the contract terms through September 30th of 2018, and for an additional $238,926 for a total contract amount of $1,374,926 to be funded from various capital accounts.
Motion, a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pos nay?
One abstention.
Four ayes, one abstention. All right, let's go back to 23. Charlie, this is the CDBG funding issues. Yasmer Estates, come on up. What'd you find out?
We will be moving forward with the elevator project.
You said...
Yes, we will, with the funding, we will be moving forward.
Did you get, maybe I'm just going deaf here. Probably am, anyway.
They'll take the 53.
They'll take the 53.
And do the project.
And, good, all right, all right, all right. All right. Let's take a motion. Brad, you want to make a motion or two will go?
I move to recommend the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development approval of the Carson City Fiscal Year 2018 Second Round of Funding Recommendations in the amount of $53,015 to Accessible Space Yasmer Estates and $79,319 to Carson City Public Works.
There's a motion, a second. On the motion discussion, I'd just like to say, I think that the Salvation Army project is an important one for Carson City, and it hits the right demographics, does the right things, and so I understand the issue here about not having a, you know, not having an actual building, so my, you know, just from my standpoint, I think I'd like to see it come back with the next round. Okay, all right. All right, on the motion, further discussion? Everybody's okay? We've got some disclosures, we can all vote on this, right? Okay. On a motion? Oh, you can't, you can't. I'm going to have to have you fix this up, so it says, vote, no vote.
I'll have the button shock the person that's abstaining.
That's not fair.
All right.
I'm shocked, totally shocked.
All right. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay? One abstention.
Abstain.
Abstain. I think that's where you were going to go, right? Abstain?
Yeah, he was believing.
All right. All right, let's take up, well, you said it up front there, so I figured I just... All right. Let's take up Lampa.
Good morning, Lee Plomo, Community Development Director. This item is for possible action to adopt on second reading. An ordinance approving the development agreement between Carson City and the property owners of the property known as the Lampa Ranch North Specific Plan Area. Again, this is second reading. This was at a meeting a couple of meetings ago with the board. For first reading, there were a few changes noted. At that meeting, those changes have been incorporated into this document for second reading, and there are no further changes at this time for you. So we recommend approval, adoption of the ordinance and approval of the agreement on second reading.
Public comment? Anybody? All right, we're on here, board, let's talk about where we're going. Everybody okay on second reading? All right, want to try a motion? We'll see some discussion. John, or you want to speak now?
It doesn't matter, wait for discussion.
Okay.
What's the ordinance number?
2017-25.
25?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I move to adopt bill number 127 on second reading, ordinance number 2017-25, and ordinance approving a development agreement between Carson City and the Myers Family Exempt Trust, the Res Family, 1993 TR 101893, RD Lampa LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company, Lampa Ranch East Hills LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company, and Terasus and Trip LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company, regarding the development of a project known as the Lampa Ranch North Specific Plan Area. Assessors' parcels numbers 010041-16-38-52-70-71-75 and -76.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you for being so gracious two weeks ago, along with the city manager, for moving this two weeks out. That took care of my problems with the matter of whether we were making substantive changes at the last minute before the first reading. So I'm, and I also have had discussions with our district attorney regarding that matter and other matters in this agreement that have led me to change my no vote. I will be supporting this now.
And I would just like to mention that I would continue to encourage the, working forward on getting an access onto East Williams Street.
Agreed.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Don't see any. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay? Carried. How about that? All right. All right, let's take up one of these other development agreements. Take up Schultz Ranch. This is 25 Bravo. Who's doing this? Oh, my goodness.
I'm doing this.
They brought you back?
Yeah.
How's your family doing?
Good. Thanks for asking. And sorry, I missed the last one. You guys pulled so many items before, I couldn't get here fast enough for first reading. So Susan Pansky for the record, this is an item to adopt the Second Amendment to the Schultz Ranch Development Agreement that will modify the construction of the park from 210 units to 250 units, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Questions? Board? Everybody okay with this? Public? Anybody? I thought Lucia was going to come up and say, oh, all right, all right. All right, on the motion, there's a motion. Make a motion.
I move to adopt bill number 128 on second reading, ordinance number 2017-26, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for Schultz Ranch between Carson City, the Narino LLC, and Ryder Duda Carson LLC on the APNs published in the agenda to change the requirement to complete the Central Neighborhood Park located in Phase III to before the issuance of the 250th building permit.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion, hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Pos nay? Carried. Okay, let's take up 25. Charlie, this is Schultz Ranch as well. This is Schultz Ranch as well. You wanna tell us what we're doing here?
Again, for the record, Susan Pansky, this is a request to approve the third phase of Schultz Ranch, their final map for 111 units out of the 424. After this phase is recorded, there will be one phase left, and I apologize, I didn't bring a graphic today to show where it is, but there is a map in your packet. This phase is at the southeast corner of the project, south of Racetrack Road and basically west of Schultz Drive. I'm here to answer questions if you have them. Planning staff feels that the conditions of approval have been met for this phase, and engineering is here as well as the applicant's representative and the applicant.
We have some questions up here, SuFizer Bagwell.
So, potentially, if I can have the applicant come forward, because I think the question will be more directed at the applicant, but several of us on the board were contacted by residents in the Schultz Ranch area that deals with condition number two on the drainage. And so, I'd like to dive into that a little deeper to ensure that that condition's truly being met, and I, I think the representative can answer that for us.
Good morning, Tim Scheideman with Lennar. I'd like to have my engineer answer that question, so it comes from the engineering background. Thank you.
Dan Birchfield with Manard Consulting, civil engineer on the project. Yes, I think the issue isn't with the drainage exactly. The Carson City representatives, or Carson City Engineering approved the drainage, and I think everything's fine as far as that goes. The, there's some construction issues with the off-site discharge that we're working through between the downstream users and Lennar, and so it's not related directly to the final map or anything to do with the lots or layout there, so, and, and we do recognize the issues and we are working through those. Yeah, it's, it's basically, the root of the issue is the, the last few feet of the pipe is, it doesn't have enough cover over it, and the homeowners' association is worried about the integrity of the pipe and potentially the roadway and the surface of the roadway being compromised. And they also raise concerns about the drainage, but I think we have those addressed, that the, that the downstream drainage is being reduced below the pre-development levels, so I think we got that portion addressed, but we just need to work through the pipe outlet itself.
Help me understand, what do you mean by work through? Does that mean yes, no?
We, we're trying to, no, we're, yeah, yeah, sure. No, we just don't know the, the construction solution yet. We, we're working with the pipe manufacturer to figure out what we need to do to make sure that the pipe is protected and doesn't, doesn't get compromised, so I don't think it's a matter of if a solution's gonna be come to, it's just figuring out what that solution is. But again, that's, it's, it's an off-site, off-site improvement that's not directly related to the lots or the final map.
Well, maybe I can follow up a little bit, just so that I'm clear, because I'm certainly interested in ensuring we protect those residents that came forward with the issue, and so there are really two issues. So, one, if the HOA prevails in saying that you cannot do that there, does that impact what we approved? What I'm after is to ensure that the components in the project can actually occur, so while we're not gonna get involved between the HOA and the developer, but if the HOA were to prevail and those items had to be removed, are they still in compliance with our conditions?
They would be, Lee Plomel, they would be because they've bonded for the improvements, they've submitted, posted a bond, rather than actually complete the improvements. So, the city has a bond against the improvements. If they, they'd have to find another solution, and ultimately, the city has the bond for the improvements that are necessary to meet the conditions of approval.
And then, secondarily, whatever the solution is for this issue, the city would actually be inspecting and ensuring that it meets a code requirement. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct. Engineering would be inspecting those improvements.
Again, I just wanna make sure everyone is protected in this deal, and that, great.
All right. Public comment? All right, we all know what's going on on the drainage issues? All right. Think the answer is fix them. All right. All right, all right. Motion's in order.
I move to approve a final subdivision map known as Schultz Ranch Phase Three from Lennar Reno LLC, resulting in the creation of 111 residential lots on Property Zone Single Family 6000 Specific Plan Area, located on Racetrack Road, APN 01067107, which fully complies with all of the conditions of approval as contained in the Schultz Ranch Common Open Space Development Tentative Map Notice of Decision and Schultz Ranch Development Agreement as amended pursuant to the requirements of Carson City Municipal Code.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Pose nay, carried. Nay. Four ayes, one nay. John, SuFizer Barrett. Okay, all right. Let's take up item 26, non-action items for board supervisors. Who wants to go? Go.
So, I would like to invite everyone to the Wangnima House, open house tomorrow from 5 to 7. It's an art exhibit honoring Native Americans since it's Native American Appreciation Month, so just want to do that. And then, last night, I attended a 4H function where they gave out all the awards, and I just wanna let you know Carson City has lots to be proud of. Wonderful children in the community doing just great things with agriculture and animals, and so it was a good function.
Anybody else? Anybody? Let me just recap. SuFizer Bagwell and I went to Washington, DC, and that's why we missed the last meeting. Let me just say, I think we had a, hopefully, what's gonna be a productive meeting with various members of different agencies of the United States government, and we were back there for a number, number of reasons. One, just to meet them, and we came back with a list of people and contact numbers, and I think some of those numbers have already been used, those contacts have already been used. And we had particular discussion with the Federal Department of Transportation representative regarding our Tiger Grant, and we left them with a fairly concise and, but complete handout regarding the importance of the Tiger Grant for our community and how it fit with this administration's requirements on grants, in other words, having substantial local, local and state and local, in this case, local funding. And so, have every reason to believe that hopefully, there'll be a good word that comes back. We had left them with an invitation to come back to Carson City anytime, and so we'll see where that goes. And I've also liked to ask the city manager, and I know we've all had discussions with him, we met with the Porter Group back in DC when we were there. I think it's be well worth our while if we get Porter Group on board, we'll negotiate the price, but to bird dog both this application and anything to do with the Greening of America EPA grant on William Street. But I think that we are poised, we're in a good position with our Tiger Grant this time. I mean, we meet all the technical requirements, and I think now, you know, we just need a little bit of push, and I know that the members of this board will be talking to NDOT officials about the grant and kind of making sure that they realize that, you know, how important that is to us and that we are here as the state capitol, and so we'll go from there.
Do you have another comment?
Sure, shoot.
Since he brought that one up, I'd also like to say that I thought the trip was very beneficial to Carson City and that I had the fortune for my question to deal with BLM properties when we were there, and so Stephen Smith from the Department of the Interior took my question and immediately responded, so I wanna tell you that they honored what they told us. I had a email waiting for me when I got back, and I think on your next item, the success is we asked for open bid, and we received word from BLM that they would accept an open bid, and that's something the residents all in that area asked us to get for the sale on those properties, and so we got a positive response. So, I think that the administration was serious when they told us to reach out with any issues, and so just wanted to bring that up. I thought the trip was very worthwhile.
And on the fun, on the fun side of things, I did get to go bowling in the White House at the Truman Lanes, and, yeah, it was fun, but, you know, I spent two hours, good quality time with the head of the guy who, with the head of the, of the public affairs group that represents all these agencies, and so I've got to speak a long time about Carson City and, you know, who we are and why it's important, all things are important to us out here. So, that was, that was pretty good, and I will tell you, I came in second on bowling. I had a 93. Second with a 93. How's that? All right. Anything further that comes before the board here? We don't have public comment, but come on up. Sure.
Merlin Payne, Pinion Hills. The BLM proposal 27B is gonna come up after around 1:30.
1:30.
And I request that it be kept in that place, because I expect some experts of the staff is gonna be bringing in regarding water resources and also a number of residents of that area most likely will be here to comment.
Yeah, the only thing I was thinking about, it will be hold 1:30, is that there's, there's a minor matter that's at the end. Thought I might just take that out of order. It's two seconds, but, but if not, we'll do, we'll make sure it's your comment. Don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
My name is Merlin Payne.
Okay. All right. Everybody knows that December 2nd, is it, where, Silver and Snowflakes, Friday, Friday the 2nd, I think it is, will be Silver and Snowflakes downtown. It's always a pleasant time of year.
Followed by hot chocolate and empty bowls. This year, we're gonna, we're gonna host it, and we're gonna do it in City Hall.
Oh, right.
And I would invite the board members, I know at least one is gonna serve hot chocolate, so I would invite the board.
Your soup.
Or serving soup. It's Friday.
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 Is that the first?
Oh, Friday, December 1st.
December 1st. Right, Friday, Friday the 1st. Okay. Anything else?
Starting at what time? What time is the Silver and Snowflakes ceremony?
Starts at 5 o'clock, is the Christmas tree lighting at the Capitol, right?
Actually, 5:30, but...
And then we come over.
5:30, it starts, but...
We have to be there by 5 to get the seat.
There'll be, I mean, anytime there's crowds gathering anymore, we're taking extra precautions, so we'll be there. I mean, it starts at 5:30, so be there, be there.
I wanna thank you for doing it at City Hall, that's great. It's closer to the venue, it makes a big difference. Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Nick, are we closing the road then? So, does the public realize, are we gonna close the road so that people can walk across or anything? What's...
So, we're also gonna extend the Carson Street closure. So, Carson Street will be closed from Proctor down to Fifth, and we're also gonna close that section of Musser, so that people can walk directly from the state capitol directly over to City Hall there.
Perfect, thank you.
So, yes, ma'am.
All right, anything else? All right, then we'll be in recess until 1:30.